So I'll open the March. It says March 1st, I'm looking at the wrong one. March 14th, Planning Board Meeting. On the agenda.
Actually, the 15th.
Is it 15th? Thank you. 15th meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. On the agenda is continuation of the special housing permit or 133 Essex. I believe the stormwater management is part of that as well, Patrick?
Yes, that's correct. That's part of this project.
Okay. And other board business, if we have the time to get to it. So we'll need to do a roll call vote to ascertain that everybody's here. So if we could start with Bill.
Bill waiting here?
Amal?
Amal Dawkins, Amal Dawkins present.
Patrick? Norton? Norton?
Pat Norton here, sorry.
Okay, Corey?
We're bull you present.
Marty?
Marty Crouch present.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor present.
Richard?
Richard Boroff here.
And Rick Mitchell here. Okay, very good. So we have a full agenda tonight. And the focus of this meeting is going to be exclusively on answering the questions that the board, planning board posed, written questions that the planning board posed to the applicant and their consultants and our peer review, our peer reviewer. There are approximately 50 questions that were posed by planning board members. If we spend four minutes on each question, that's well over three hours. So this, this meeting is going to focus on just those questions. We will limit, I'm going to endeavor to limit the conversation so we get to actually address all the questions that have been posed. Those questions that were posed to ransom engineering, ransom engineering will have an opportunity to answer those. But this conversation is to be between the board, the applicant, our peer reviewer, and our peer reviewer to answer the questions that were posed by planning board members. Not a goal, it's not intended to exclude the public. But these are technical questions that were posed by the planning board. And the planning board needs to get those answers. If we have time available, we'll open it up for questions from the public. But it is under the discretion of the Chair of the Planning Board to, as to when that can happen, if it happens, given the time constraints facing. I'm going to ask that everybody be very cognizant of a very tight timeframe. Try not to be long-winded in questions or in answers. And please don't repeat the same question over again in the interest of being efficient and respectful of everybody's time. Does anybody have any questions?
That when I, when I formulated my questions, I directed them in certain instances to all experts and I didn't intend to exclude any experts. So to the extent that an engineer from ransom engineering was an appropriate person to respond, I think it makes sense to respond to the question rather than wait to some indeterminate time, an hour or two after the question is in discussed by the peer reviewer and the applicant's expert.
Well, in fact.
Hold on. I would support that motion.
Excuse me, excuse me. There's nobody's making a motion here, Bill.
I would, I would support Marty's discussion.
The point is, these questions were directed to specific people. Other board members did ask questions of ransom engineering. Just because you didn't do so doesn't mean that everybody gets a chance to answer the question. Ransom engineering is, represents the public and the specific group of Save Chewbacca Woods. The information we're seeking tonight is from registered professional engineers, our peer reviewer. And all of information that's been presented and will be presented tonight has been peer reviewed. That's not true for ransom engineering. They represent the public. Their, their responses have not been peer reviewed. And I don't think it's fair to the applicant to suddenly have a member of the public who's not been peer reviewed start entering into answering questions that were not asked of them.
Well, my, my questions were directed to all experts.
You didn't say that.
So were mine, so were mine, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm sorry, but those are not going to be allowed. We have 50 questions from the board that are directed to the applicant. The applicant is the person in front of the board, not ransom engineering. The questions that were directed at ransom engineering, ransom engineering can answer those questions. That's the way this runs. It's not a free for all. So.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more, I have one other question. I'm just curious about the reformatting of the questions and rephrasing of the questions and dropping certain questions. So we just received this document an hour before the meeting. I haven't had a chance to go through it, but just glancing through it, I see that there's, there are things that are reworded, things that have been omitted, questions that have been omitted. I, I would request that the, the board refer to the original document that was directed to the engineers and not the slide deck here.
And I agree with Jonathan 100%.
And so do I, I agree with Jonathan too.
If either one of you have specific questions that you don't think were included or clipped off, then you're more than welcome to answer those at the time we get to those.
Mr. Chairman, there was no time to go through this before the meeting.
Excuse me, this, this PowerPoint presentation was presented to us less than an hour before this meeting. And I went through it and I know that my questions were severely edited. Questions were admitted. Now, this, the purposes of this meeting was for our questions to be answered, not our edited questions to be answered. I looked at this PowerPoint and I realized that not only were questions edited, questions were omitted and questions were added. And they were put on a PowerPoint that was produced by the applicant. Now, in my mind, that creates an incredible appearance of impropriety and bias on the part of the planning board, and I think it's almost unethical. My questions are my questions, they were presented in a logical sequence. And if the applicant didn't like it, well, we should have not had this meeting then.
All right, go ahead, Jill.
This is so upsetting because the point of it was to actually streamline your questions. You have your questions in front of you. I put them in categories so that what we could do is have a public comment after each section to attempt to.
Excuse me. And then why my questions are.
I have a question. On behalf of this, this is insanity. I, I purposely put it in a format so that your questions could get the time they needed. And as we go through those process, right? You talk about the blasting control plan, we have those identified questions. I didn't cut questions out. If there was a question, it's in there in different sections. Some of you asked the same exact question. So why maybe, wait a second, I still haven't finished. I still haven't. But my point is, is I think what is in the best interest of time was to go through it. It isn't to, it is actually created a public comment section to do what you asked, Ms. Crouch, to give the public the opportunity when it's timely after each segment. So what I think is probably a good idea is to go through those. And if your question relative to that specific segment wasn't answered, you have them in front of you. I don't know who asked what questions. I can't tell. It wasn't sent to me like that. I got eight distinct, different texts with all these questions. And you have people in front of you who need to answer them. And to do it the way you want, we would be here for four days. So if we just do this, I think, just let's dive into the PowerPoint. Because this is about due process for an applicant who's before you. The point is to answer every one of your questions and that's the intent tonight. So when you see how the PowerPoint's put, instead of being so negative and critical, think about it in a positive light to get the information you need, want, and have to have for your decision. And I think you'll find, every one of you is an intelligent professional person. Every one of you is going to find it's done in a manner that you actually are able to address your questions more readily than having each of you present separately. So if I may, Mr. Mitchell, can we just go to the PowerPoint?
I would like to get there. And as I said, if there are specific questions that aren't, haven't been asked.
I gotta comment on this.
I understand you have a comment.
Were you asked to, to do this? Were you, Miss Mann, were you asked to prepare this PowerPoint?
By whom?
I don't know. Why did you do it?
I, I don't understand the question. It's my job to ensure that my public hearings, right? When I present information, it's done in a manner that can get you the information. So I want to get that to you. I.
But it's, but it's the board's job to run the meetings.
Of course it's your job, but who's your discretionary ability, if you submit eight different sets of questions, six of which are the same question, do you not think it's expeditious and intelligent to combine them so that you can get your information? Because this is going to ferret out stuff.
It is, but I think each, each of the person, each of the people who are asking the question will probably withdraw the question if, if it has been answered.
Good. Why don't we get there and find out? No, enough of this, enough of this. We are going through this. We are going to answer the questions. We've improved all this information for the last two months. This is the last time we're going to cover this subject area. If there is a question that you thought was not asked, was edited improperly, or you want to add in to complement the one you have that you don't think was properly put in, then you can do that. But this makes no sense here to act like a bunch of children who are going, well, my question didn't get asked. So I don't think we should be doing this. The point is to get the substantive information on the table. We've got a round table of experts here. Let's get the information going and stop bickering. Act like professionals who are trying to apply the zoning bylaw and get it done in a professional, thorough manner. The applicant is prepared to answer the questions the board posed. And if you have further questions, that's fine. Let's get going and stop fooling around.
Well, can we eliminate then the questions that none of the board members ask? The questions that were inserted that none of the board members ask?
That's fine.
But we just, we just got this an hour ago. Now we're supposed to, I haven't even read the thing.
You're going to have the chance to see it tonight. So that's the whole point here is to get answers to the questions that the board posed to the applicant. That's what we're doing here. The applicant is ready to answer questions. And any versions that you think were edited or need corrections or were missed or were misinterpreted, that's fine. Let's get them out on the table. But we can't sit here and go, well, I don't like the way the questions were edited. I don't like the punctuation. I don't like this. Let's stop with this bickering and move forward and get the questions answered. It's as simple as that.
Let's go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jill?
May I share my screen, please? Here we go. Okay.
And Marty, if you think there's a question there that was inserted, then you should make note of that.
Well, it's very difficult when you have so little time to do it. But I have noted that there are some questions that were inserted and the questions have been rephrased.
You'll have ample opportunity, I promise. So on the front page, the development.
With the time I have to prepare.
So this is the development team introduction. As you know, Larry Smith, Julia Dickinson are from Chewbacca Hill Capital Partners. Our civil engineer here to answer your questions, Brent Cole from Granite Engineering. Greg Williams in Sprages, Greg Hockmuth is our wetland scientist. From our hydrogeology team is Rick Frappa and James Christensen. I, Jill Mann from Mann and Mann. The owner, Kathy and Rich DeVal. Kathy, I'm sorry, Kathy and Brian Rich. And the town's independent expert is Mr. James Emery. So brief overview, I won't even go through it. I mean, I, we gave you this picture. I do offer it because I know there were some questions about the ledge face. Here's an example of exactly what it's going to look like when it comes in. We did do the anticipated grading. So this is what the condition will look like. And you have a copy of this in your package, you know.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, this is off the subject, hasn't been discussed. And there's a lot to discuss around this slide. Please move on.
It was just an introduction. I, Mr. Mr. Mitchell, I don't know why it's so adversarial tonight. I truly am trying to get information out. And I apologize if I'm creating an adversarial atmosphere. I'm trying not to, but here's.
No, I, I don't think you are. I think the board's being extremely hostile.
I am stunned by the attitude. I am. But here's the first slide that's appropriate. So Mr. Mitchell, what we did was we did it in sections. So this first particular provision is the controlled blasting plan, plan questions. And these are the questions that we received. They were directed to both Mr. Rappa, Frappa and Mr. Emery. I'm going to read the questions and then they can answer them. Would you review confined to the technical aspects of the control blast plan prepared by main drilling and blasting? As who, as those aspects relate to protections of wells, homes, groundwater? Did you review include an appropriate overall hydrogeological assessment of the project site and surrounding area with regard to blasting? I don't know from whom these questions came, but if you want to say who it was, feel free. And then I turn it over to the experts.
Okay, I start?
That's Mr. Frappa. Please do. Thank you very much.
Okay, sure. So a proper review of a blasting plan requires an understanding of the physical hydrogeologic and environmental conditions at the site. We also consider the surrounding land use, the proximity of homes, private wells, and the use of water resources in the area. So I've been a practicing hydrogeologist now for 35 years. I'm a licensed professional geologist. I've completed hydrogeologic investigations for numerous sites in Massachusetts. So in my professional opinion, I feel that sufficient hydrogeologic information exists and is available from the site test bit data, from topographic mapping that exists, geologic mapping, hydrogeologic mapping that's been provided on mass GIS sites. And that collective information allows me to provide a scientific opinion on risks to human health and the environment from the blasting and site development of this property.
Can we hear from, I'd like to, GZA, GZA, James Emery, you're our peer reviewer, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I'd like to have you guys swap back and forth as you respond to these. So, James, can you respond to?
Yeah, and I, I think it's probably appropriate for the board because they probably don't know me too well, but I've been in, I'm a professional hydrogeologist. I've been practicing for 40 years. I owned my own firm for 35 years before being acquired by GZA about five years ago. I have developed and permitted and completed groundwater protection programs for over 2,000 municipalities up and down the East United States. I have been engaged in numerous large blasting programs that are much larger than this, having looked at what potential is for impacts from blasting on local groundwater resources. So I, I want to give you a sense of, of my background. I've been a guest speaker at the Pentagon and at the World Bank and, and across in the East United States on these matters. So one thing I wanted to share with you is the, yes, we went well beyond the, the local issues and the local issues are predominantly residential wells that are close by, groundwater quality nearby, and of course, any concern or thoughts that might be present for municipal water systems. And I will tell you that in my review, I made a number of recommendations that needed to be changed in my view to increase the protection of this community. And my job is, I work with municipalities. That's pretty much all I do is work with municipalities in, in helping them protect their groundwater resources. And so we have, the, the applicant has acknowledged my, you know, input. They have made adjustments. And in my view, yes, we've gone beyond just what's on the site and completed what I consider to be very appropriate hydrogeologic assessments for this particular project site.
At this point, Mr. Mitchell, does any, any one of the board members have questions about this, this slide or additional questions?
Yeah, what, if anybody thinks this was edited or doesn't accurately represent the question, then they should speak up now. If not, we'll move on.
I have a question. I believe, I didn't write this question, but I believe the way I read the question is item two is, is, has nothing to do with the control blasting plan, but this is titled control blasting plan. So, so I think this question is about, it's, it's about how do we go beyond the control blasting plan to look at hydrogeology? I believe that's the intent of the question, but I didn't write it, so I would.
I would refrain from trying to read other people's minds.
I'm just reading the words, Mr. Chairman.
I know what you're, I know what you're reading.
And I think.
Jonathan, I think you're right. These were my questions and I wanted to know whether there was an assessment of this site that went beyond a review of the blasting plan and took into account what, what happened after the blasting was complete and after the project was complete.
Yes, and the answer to that question is yes, resoundingly yes.
Okay, is there any evidence of that? Any, any evidence of the result that you came up with, Mr. Emery?
Well, the evidence is in the plan that they've, that we've agreed to proceed with. And that is to take the sensitive receptors that we believe that are potentially there and address the activity to, to ensure that those sensitive receptors are not adversely impaired.
By sensitive receptors, you mean?
Residential wells. Right. Residential wells, offsite migration of potential contaminants, potential impact to municipal water supplies, surface water and things of that sort.
Okay, now, engineering deals in probabilities. So if I said to you, you so far don't see any problems. Yeah, you want to put a probability on that? What's the probability that there is a problem? That, you know, there's some, some contaminants, some alteration of the groundwater that adversely affects, you know, the area. What, what, you think their probability is?
That's a broad based question that's probably not easy. It's not an easy answer.
Yeah, and I'm going to jump in here.
We address this later if you wanted to.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I think in the big picture though.
Address it later.
I, I do want to suggest and let the board know that on the scale of sensitivity issues, there are, I've been engaged in projects that are far larger than this, five times larger than this that have, that are being, you know, that there are blast zones within the direct recharge of a municipal water supply. So from a sensitivity perspective, this is way down on the scale of concern for impacts. And I think that's got to be understood because blasting occurs every day in very sensitive environments successfully. Now, can it be improved? Always can be improved. And that's why you hired me to go in and dig into the details and say, can this be improved? And that's what I did. Because I'm representing the town to make sure that the town is not impaired by the activities of this particular facility. Now, I can't determine whether it's a permitted use. That's up to you. If it's a permitted use, I'm dealing with it as, assuming that it's a permitted use and whether or not that is, has a, that has the high probability, median probability, or low probability of having an impact. So I think that's probably where I'll leave it and we can discuss it later. Got a lot of slides ahead of us.
Go ahead.
So here's the next one. I think at this point it was described, somebody asked us to present a precedent example when blasting was detected to have strayed from its plan. And then basically, how do you avoid the harm? You can see all the questions. So this, we asked for Andy DeFor to actually respond to, he's from main drilling and blast. And then Rick Frappa, and if you want Mr. Emery to weigh in, that's up to the board, but those who we thought should answer the questions. So Andy, I guess they're asking what happens when you, you don't follow protocol or something goes awry? Can you respond?
Yes, so in the blasting world, typically the most common example of when things don't go your way is when you have an exceedance in either vibration or an air pressure. And those are the two measurements we've discussed in the past that we're, we have to give to the fire detail every day. And that's what's set forth in the blast plan to ensure we don't cause any damage. If that does happen, what we do is we go back to the drawing board and we readjust our blast design, which really simply put, we reduce our charge weight for delay to reduce the vibration of the air over pressure. And we go back to work. And typically in a case like this, that blast design would be approved by geotech oversight, which there's a lot on the, on the call here tonight. And, you know, the local fire department.
So I guess also, so you have your plan, you know, does it comply with all regulation? I mean, I guess it's set in your, your, your actual plan, but it does ask you, describe how your plan is safe. So can you? Yeah.
Yeah. So, so how the plan is compiled, compiled in, in general is, is using state and federal regulations. And we make sure in the plan and in the blast design and in product selection, when we're talking about contamination, that it's all make sure we go with the IME, which is International Makers of Explosives. They have a document out there we use as a guideline to make sure the product selection we're using is safe for the environment. And the housekeeping too is a big part of it as well. On how we do our work, need to make sure that we're, we're, we're clean, where all the product is consumed in the blast and we're leaving nothing behind. And we're making sure we're not leaving anything on the surface.
And how do you monitor your performance in accordance with your plans? That's that number two question. So do you have ample monitoring? Like, what do you do? Do you have your own? Is it all outside?
So the, how we monitor is through, you know, seismographs. That's how we, we monitor the vibration and the air overpressure. So we will put the seismic graph units out and those are all in the blast plan where those locations are proposed. And we'll take the readings, we'll turn them over to the local fire detail and that will tell us whether or not we're in compliance. It dives a little deeper into the environmental regulation that probably one of the other professionals would like to speak to. Because this is a little out of the ordinary, typical blasting site where we're having the monitoring wells installed and doing the sampling. That's usually done by somebody else other than the blasting company.
So if, if, Mr. Chairman, if the board would like to ask more questions of Mr. DeFor, if not, I would, I would suggest that we have Mr. Frappa answer from the perspective of geology relative to blasting impacts and not just the seismology of it. But if the board has questions for Mr. DeFor, most certainly.
Yeah, I'm thinking if the board has, I don't know whose question this is, if they have a small question to get clarity.
No, I think this was my question. It's parsed out, but it's parsed out well. I thank you, Andy DeFor. It was less for you and more for the hydrology. But I appreciate the thorough answer and I think that it's my oversight for not having included more of the blasting. So yeah, I would say it's for hydrology and wanting to know how far ahead of the storm can you get if there are downstream effects in our watershed?
So then Mr. Frappa is going to be somebody who you, you will definitely want to hear from. Rick, can you please address this and then there might be some follow-up questions?
Sure. So, so to start out with, we, we look right at the source. So we're making sure that the blaster is not using ANFO, which is ammonium nitrate with fuel oil, which is more soluble in groundwater. So there's a lot of issues with using that type of explosive. So we made sure that they're not using that type. They're using material that has very low solubility in, in groundwater. And we're using all non-perchlorate materials. So, so those are the two contaminants of concern when it comes to blasting primarily are perchlorate and nitrate. So by using the. the, uh, uh, the blastex type or, or emulsified type of, of, uh, explosive, we're minimizing the risk of solubility to release nitrate to the ground. So, so from there on, it's all housekeeping, how, how well the, the blaster um, limits the amount of exposure to, to the atmosphere, uh, and, and, and his, his handling of the explosives. So we try to have them quickly load these holes and then with a few hours detonate them and ensure that, that they were all detonated, uh, by looking at the seismograph readings. Um, on a groundwater protection side, though, we know that the community is concerned with, you know, the, the, the groundwater quality, the surface water quality, uh, the, the closeness of the GPOD to the site. So what we've agreed to was, uh, the installation of, instead of just five monitoring wells, we're, we're adding uh, three more. So we're, we're monitoring, we'll be monitoring eight uh, groundwater monitoring wells that surround the work area in addition to the 12 off-site, uh, residential wells that are in close proximity to, uh, the work area.
Do you want me to bring these plans up for you, Mr. Frappa?
Oh, I, I, I think that's okay. We can, we can, we'll just in interest of time, we'll just keep going. So, uh, some of the other plans that we have, um, are, are what we call a, a rock handling and management plan. So the, the, the key aspect of that plan is to make sure that when they're handling the rock after they're, they're, uh, uh, breaking it using the explosives, that the material is properly managed. We're not allowing muck piles basically sit there um, and, and, and potentially leach nitrate to, uh, to the groundwater, the surface water. They'll be removed within, you know, 72 hours, a week, or covered with, with, with plastic if they need to be left longer than 72 hours. Uh, the material will be con- consolidated onto pads. And then, uh, we'll be using test kits to monitor for, for, uh, nitrate um, in the, the containment structure where this, uh, where, where the, uh, um, uh, rock material is going to be stockpiled. So while we're doing this, uh, work, every two weeks, we're testing all of the monitoring wells onsite and offsite. And we're going to be looking for what we call indicator parameters to see whether or not they rise above a certain action level that we set below groundwater quality standards. So that if we reach an action level, we know that we, we, that the, this, the, uh, blasting needs to be suspended. And then we try to figure out what's going wrong and identify how we can reduce nitrate concentrations in either surface water or, or, uh, or groundwater, depending on, uh, what, what's elevated. And usually a couple of housekeeping activities are, are, are needed. And, uh, we might continue to monitor. Once they go below our action levels, then blasting can, can resume. So at no time will the nitrate levels in the groundwater ever exceed the groundwater quality standard. So that, that's, that's assurance that we're not impacting, uh, site groundwater.
So then in the interest of item three, um, you know, what, what kind of thing do you do to start to draw, like, other than stopping? Um, what is done to draw back the nitrate, nitrate concentration?
Okay, yeah. So I think Andy can, can talk more to that because he's more familiar with the, the, the hand, the, the actual housekeeping duties. Um, and, and the types, types of, of, uh, like loading factors that are used or powder factors that are used to, uh, break the rock.
Let me, maybe I can add to this too.
Sure.
One, one thing as the town's consultant, um, in the review that that I gave, that I made is the recommendation for them to uh, create a liner under the muck piles. I mean, the, the, the real issue for nitrate is containment, right? So, and that's, that's a product of the blast agent. So if the blasting is being done efficiently, you're not going to have any nitrate. If the blasting somehow was not efficiently done, then what we've set up, what, what I've asked them to do and what they've accepted to do is to create this, uh, impervious, uh, barrier on the bottom of this muck pile, drain it towards a settling pond, and then they're going to be sampling it every day by, on the site. And so I also took what we did for another project that was in a municipal groundwater recharge area. I mean, very close to a thousand gallon minute well that the town completely depended upon and could not lose it for one day. Uh, we put in criteria that said if the standard in the muck pile settling pond got above half the drinking water standard, then we would have an action item. If it got the above three quarters of that drinking water stop, we would stop. So there is a, there, it's almost impossible for us to get to a point where we're going to be in a damaged control. On top of that, we, I've asked them to go with three more monitoring wells. So we've got a total of eight. So we've got a layer upon layer upon layer to evaluate and protect and stop the process. Uh, if there's anything that was missed, missed, you know, not done. And what can happen is, uh, we can change, we can stop the process, we can go back to the driller or, or the blaster and, and ask them to make changes in their daily activity. Now, what I will say, and I'm, I'm not here to promote anybody, but Maine, uh, the company that's been selected for this drilling and blasting, blasting and drilling is the gold standard in this northeast. They are the best without any shadow. And I've worked with a lot of different entities, but in my view, um, these guys are, are, they know what they do and they understand sensitivity and, and in every case, when I've asked a plan to be changed to address specific concerns by a town or municipality, uh, they have addressed that. So I just want to encourage everyone to understand that this was, this was taken a hard look at, there's a deep dive on this process and they may, you know, and, and the changes were made to the benefit of the town. So I feel at this point that they've done a really good job in trying to make this the best pro- possible plan that you could have.
Good, maybe we can.
It's more expensive. Pardon, sorry.
Can we move on?
Yeah, thank you. I'm done with that. Thanks.
Okay.
So the next question, um, it, it, there's something, there's a set of assumptions. So the assumptions are listed. Um, it's just basically about the exposed amount of vertical ledge. Um, Mr. Cole can actually, Brent Cole from Granite can tell you really what the linear footage of the 20-foot exposure. And there's one area, I think that's 30, I, I, he's going to address that. He's qualified. Um, and as far as the water weeping through, we're going to have, um, both Brent, the, um, engineer and then Mr. Frappa, the hydrogeologist attend to this. So Brent, um, I don't, can you just basically open up and just, you know, let, respond to this particular comment and explain to, make sure the givens are correct, or if you need to increase or decrease, if you would do so, so the board has the proper assumptions before them?
Hey, Joe, if I could, if I could jump in before, right, real quick. So just the, the, the formation of the ice, let's just talk about that first. Um, so when, when you cut rock, uh, whether it's, it's, it's a natural cut, which is, you know, caused by a river or a stream, um, or it's blasted, um, it will weep water, right? So we, we all see that. And then it becomes more obvious in the winter that's weeping water because you see ice formation. And it's, it's very similar to, you know, icicles that, that occur on a poorly insulated home. Uh, the meltwater's slow. And then as, as, you know, prolonged cold weather occurs, sub-freezing, the, the icicles get, get larger. It just, the slow drip extends it, just like, uh, stalactite from a, uh, in, in a, uh, in a cavern. So, uh, typically what happens with these, with these icicles is that they, they either sublimate or they melt when, uh, you know, when the temperatures rise. You know, rarely do you see them fall, but obviously the potential is there. And it, it, it's a concern that, that needs to be dealt with. And then I'll, I'll let Brent talk about it.
Sure. So I'll, I'll go through the given, and this is actually a, a duplicate question. Um, it, it was a question that talked about ice, and then actually there's another one that was posed the same way that talked about, um, fallen rock. Um, we combined both of them. The, the answer will be the same for both. But the given was there's over 444 linear feet of exposed vertical ledge face proposed, a good portion of which is 20 to 30 feet high. The average height is actually only 19 feet for, for all the ledge face. The, the length was correct. If the water does weep under the soil at the top of the ledge and from the joints in the exposed blasted face of the ledge per the last bullet item of page one of GEI's comments dated 2422. And if during the winter months, large icicles and ice sheets form above the adjacent yards and entry, what would be the safety considerations be around falling ice and debris? Um, and in our design, we actually design a safety zone that sits at the toe of this ledge face. This safety zone provides a buffer for any debris or fallen ice that may fall off of the ledge face. The debris is contained in this buffer and it prevents any hazards to pedestrians, vehicles or structures. The buffer ranges, um, and on our site, it ranges from 10 to 15 feet wide. And the reason is, is because it gets wider as the ledge face gets taller. It also ranges from three to four feet deep because it collects the ice, it collects the debris, and that depth ranges depending upon the height of the ledge face. This ledge face, um, was designed to federal highway administrative guidelines. And there is a detail located on our plan that gives you an idea of how we got the safety zone width for the height of our ledge face. To add some additional safety measures, we have a chain link fence on the top to prevent anyone from playing in that area as well as a fence below to help contain any fallen debris or ice. As for questions number two, three and four, they're all very similar. Um, remediation could be, could be taken in two ways. Um, if remediation of the removal of ice and debris, um, it would be picked up, debris would be picked up by the maintenance crew and ice would just melt over time. Um, as for remediation for harm, um, the safety zone's in place to prevent any necessary remediation. Um, obviously it's still, the property is owned by the homeowners association. Um, so there would be remediation strategies there, but the risk is, is reduced by providing that safety zone. A similar safety zone that you see on highways with cars driving 75 miles an hour. It's, it's built to prevent any need for remediation. And about you, Joe.
And as far as the cost within the affordable range, there, there would be liability insurance. So if something should happen and there's an accident, it's covered by the liability insurance that the homeowners association does, um, carry. So that's where the, the, any kind of expense would be born. Um, but if somebody had this question, did Mr. Cole and Mr. Frappa answer it? Would you like more information? Do you have a follow-up question?
No further questions.
No? Okay, okay. So then we'll go on. So now, um, Mr. Mitchell, as I had said, I did put in public comments after each segment because I thought that it was better if it was timely.
So, and you want to open it up for public questions?
I defer to the board, but that's the way I had done it because it makes more sense. The experts are now on it. They understand what the questions are. If there's relevant questions, I mean, to my mind, it makes sense to take it now, but I defer to you and I defer to the board.
Well, as I said in the beginning, I'd like to keep this, uh, focused on the, the board questions. So if the board has any other questions to follow up or they thought were excluded, um, or weren't answered properly, this is the time to, um, ask those.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we could have the public, these public periods. Um, ransom engineering could, could, uh, speak up if they wished.
Um, we'll give ransom engineering a five minutes. Yes, that's fine if they want to have.
We could do, we could do that whenever these, these, um, you know, periods appear in the PowerPoint.
That's what I just suggested.
Great.
If they have a question and it needs to be relevant or questioning whether in fact the, uh, proposals that have been brought forward by the applicant's engineer or our peer review are in. And they need to be pertinent to the questions that were asked.
Right, right.
I, I, I believe I might be the only, uh, ransom, uh, representative who's been promoted to a presenter so far.
Um, so I don't know. Elizabeth as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I just got promoted. Hang on, I'm, uh, bear with me. I don't know why my video is not coming on. Um, I, I apologize that I don't seem to be getting my video, um, but bear with me, given the limits on time, I'm gonna speak. I think you've all seen my, my face in previous meetings. Um, I'm also a licensed professional geologist. I've been practicing for over 32 years. And like Mr. Emery, I know what it's like to have your name associated with the name of your firm. Um, I think, um, you know, just speaking to the two questions that were um, initially, I guess, maybe questions from Marty about, um, the, uh, technical aspects of the drilling and blasting plan and, um, the hydrogeologic effects of the blasting. Um, I, I also note what Mr. Emery did, that Maine Drilling and Blasting is a well-known firm that we, we also work with on projects. And, um, you know, we are, uh, certainly aware that they are using industry standard techniques for safety. Um, I believe though, that the, the questions, um, that Mr. Couch um, was asking, I'm not sure I understood, um, the response from Mr. Frappa or Mr. Emery in that, um, I think the, the question speaks to whether there should be in consideration of the hydrogeologic impacts of the development, not just the, from the blasting itself. And perhaps we're going to hear about that later on, but, um, particularly with regard to the second question, um, I'm not sure that, uh, I understood from, from their presentation, how the, um, I, I understand Mr. Emery has requested additional wells, but I think those are still focused up on the blast area and not for the site as a whole. So, um, I guess my input is more of a, of a question in response to their questions. It, it was our interpretation that additional data from the site as a whole would be needed, um, from the current condition in order to assess potential impacts from the development in the future.
Right, and that's a, that's an, that's an opinion you voiced on numerous different occasions.
Yeah, and I'm just curious because I didn't, I didn't hear that part of the question addressed by Mr. Frappa or Mr. Emery.
So Rick, I think you did say it, but can you, can you?
Well, can I ask, can we, our next, Mr. Chairman, our next slide deals with this.
Good, let's move on then.
Okay.
We could go to the next slide and, and address that.
So at this point.
I think it skipped.
Um, oh, you, oh, you want me to go in order? I apologize. You know what? I was, this one?
No, keep going. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
No, that's it. What?
There you go.
Oh, this, okay.
Yeah, I think that gets to it.
Sorry. So this is the, this is the, um, so now we've, we've moved. May I, I apologize for doing this, but Ms. Ransom, are you finished with then the blasting questions? You just had the questions with the two?
Yes, my blasting questions were primarily related to the first two. I'm happy to move on. I assume there'll be another opportunity later to.
Well, I did it, I did it kind of in segments to try and keep it on task. So here we go. This was the evaluation that Rick, um, Rick Frappa and Brent Cole did relative to the, um, slide presentation that was presented by Mr. Nielsen. So at this point, um, we should go through all of the questions because this is what the board had posed.
Excuse me, but this is, this is where I do, uh, would like confirmation from other board members. But in my review of the questions that the board members posed, and I have a separate copy of them, I do not think, and members can correct me if I'm wrong, that any of the members asked questions three, four, five, or six.
Somebody asked them because they're up there.
No, I believe questions were inserted. So if any board member asked those questions.
It's absolutely possible. If you don't want to answer, if you don't want to hear it, just tell. It's absolutely possible. If you don't want to answer, if you don't want to hear just those questions, you most certainly can say you don't care about those answers. Yeah, I I have no issue with that.
Well, this was to be board member questions, not questions that the applicant posed to then answer to.
It was, this was honest to God, Ms. Couch, this was not done to undermine you. This was done to assist you in your role. And if you don't want the questions answered, we'll skip them. So just do one and go to six, one, two, and six. We have no problem skipping questions.
Two and seven are fine.
Okay, I mean, again, you should read the other questions to see if you think you might want that information, but if you don't and none of the other board members do, then let's move on. So how about?
I'd like to see the answers to these questions.
Well, maybe ransom engineering could answer the questions.
I think this, we can, we can go through them. Go ahead. You, at this point, I think Rick because it Rick had presented to the board a memo um dated February fourth that actually did address these, but these questions were asked, so he wanted to make sure he would follow up. So Mr. Frappa, if you would.
Okay, so my, so what I I'm presenting more like general responses to to these questions and as we go through um the the this presentation, we we try to fine tune the the answers that sometimes you're looking for like right away. And and I think there's a lot of background understanding that needs to to be said before we can start getting down to nitty gritty. So I I apologize if if it's going to be somewhat slow a- as we get going, but but it's important for you to understand the background. So um it, so a a part of what we're doing to assess the hydrogeologic conditions of the site and surrounding area. Um, we 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 really need to understand um the 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 background conditions, right? So so we're we're trying to understand what the uh the ground surface elevations are and surface water elevations are, and we can get that data from existing mapping. Um, onsite data from test pits, we have that. Uh, we have USGS mapping information. We have mass GIS mapping data. Uh, that also includes hydraulic information concerning aquifer yield and transmissivity data. So there's, there's actually site-specific information uh for for the aquifers that's that are in the area near the site. Um, we know from experience what the conditions are in other parts of Massachusetts. Um, I've worked at many sites across uh Massachusetts as has uh, you know, other members of of our our uh, excuse me, our team um and your consultant Jamie. Um, and basic hydrogeologic principles, you know. Groundwater flows downhill. That that's, that's something that we all know and and we got to keep that in mind when we're, when we're talking about where groundwater flow um migrates to. So everyone agrees that there's granite bedrock below the site. It's a crystalline rock with virtually no porosity. It transmits small quantities of water, which are fracture controlled, and has low permeability based on the wetland areas that occur due to an impervious surface. Okay, so if this granite had, you know, large diameter fractures at the ground surface, um, these wetlands probably wouldn't be there. So in addition to the private wells that are located along Chewbacca Road, um, we we have, well, we will be installing additional wells on site as as part of the blasting project to monitor the groundwater quality. Um, when we are looking at the the Chewbacca Road wells, what we noticed is that these are deep. They're they're going between two hundred and four hundred feet into bedrock. And and that's not because these people like to pay a lot of money for a well. It drilling is very expensive. It it's because these wells don't yield a lot of water, so so they're trying to go deep to get adequate storage for household use. And uh and as needed, so they don't de-water their wells while, you know, a household of four or five are are taking a shower. I I've experienced that as a kid growing up, so I know. Um, so uh through through, you know, some of these questions that that are answered or were addressed um or presented to us, um, you know, I'll get into some detail that I I think, you know, people from ransom engineering and some of the board members are specifically uh looking for. So I'll turn it over to uh Brent or or Jamie if they want to comment here.
Yeah, and when you do, um, I actually would be helpful if um whoever is responding actually answer the, read the question and respond to the question directly as opposed to general al generalities.
Okay.
I think basically, uh, Ms. Couch didn't want to have answered one and two. So if we could, if we could read, so how do you recommend the planning board assess the criticism of ransom's engineering work as theoretical and impractical? So ransom saying that um, how how basically, how do you recommend the planning board assess criticism, your criticism, that ransom's work is theoretical and impractical? How do you think they should address that? Well, how do you think they should take that?
To me, Joe?
Yeah, yes, please.
Well, actually, it could go to ransom.
I think that's actually not, is, it's not written correctly. I think what she's asking is.
I don't really understand the question, to be honest.
Uh, basically, in one of our presentations, we said that ransom engineering's work is presented on that side was theoretical and impractical. So the board wants to know if that was actually said, how should they interpret that and why should they, I guess, basically believe you or or give credence to that statement?
And is the person that wrote that question, is that the question you meant to ask?
Well, right, I mean, what ransom said of of the applicant's engineer was they did a desktop analysis and the um and then ransom was criticized as just having a um a theoretical and impractical approach. So I really ransom should address that the criticism that their approaches is theoretical and impractical. And then, of course, um, the applicant's engineer can explain why their their approach is much more than a desktop analysis, which to some extent they've already done uh with respect to the the various and and test pits, but uh uh, so that was was a question for ransom.
So we can do that at the end when public comment because quite frankly, they're, they're not the petitioner, but so then does any, does ransom's, you don't want to answer three. So does the analysis properly out of the described likely impacts? You don't want it, you don't want that answer?
Well, I think if if you answer it, it's only fair to give ransom a an opportunity to respond immediately and not wait until, you know, it's some, some.
They presented a pre, a a slide presentation that we were not even allowed to counter afterward. So all we're trying to do is respond to that when we did before. This simply is it we're trying to flush out the first two questions because they were very um difficult to to actually get grainy with. That's why we did it. So I don't want to engage in a back and forth with ransom. We can say.
I don't think that's a, I don't think that's, I don't think that's helpful.
So let's just jump then because this doesn't, it it doesn't even make sense, Mr. Mitchell. I thought these were going to be helpful to the board, and I think they are, but I'm not forcing that on anyone. So number.
Well, actually, Mr. Frappa's February fourth uh document, it it was really not a letter to the planning board. It was actually attached to your February eleventh letter to the planning board as an exhibit. It took me a while to find it. But it was unsigned and it was a preliminary commentary about ransom slides. So that information is before the board already.
Yes. So um, and then we go to seven, Mr. Mitchell. Does the development in fact pose adverse environmental risks owing to um, the extent of blasting operation that will lower bedrock no by as much as forty feet and involve removal of trees, rocks? And then, um, so who, I think that would be Mr. Frappa. There you go. I would answer it in parts, A and then B.
I I almost think we've actually had this discussion on A at least.
Yeah, there are two locations in which we we reduce by forty feet, so Mr. Frappa may want to actually address that. Because I think, what did you say, Mr. Frappa? Was the average ledge removal, you say?
Yeah, so when when we're looking at the amount of rock that's being removed um and the amount of water that's actually held in storage uh in 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 the fracture porosity that exists, uh, we've run some numbers and the amount of water that's present in that rock that's being removed is i- is probably in the order of about a thousand gallons. It's it's not a large volume of rock. And um so when when you compare that to the amount of water that's present in, you know, the surrounding aquifers, which which are measured in, you know, the tens of millions of gallons, you know, removing a little bit of rock um that has very little water to begin with is is basically inconsequential to um you know, to to the overall area, uh, the the water balance in that area. You know, there are, there are, we do address some of the concerns for the wetlands in in later slides. So I I think if if you you, if you take issue with uh us removing some walk, some some rock from that uh uh, you know, sixteen acre area and how it could affect the wetlands, uh, that's something that we discuss uh later.
Yeah, and I think if you scroll down, Joe, on that slide, you know, it's making these hypotheses, A and B, but I'm looking for the question.
It says, does the development in fact pose environmental risks due to potential failures in the stormwater management system? This is Brent. So Brent, did the development create or pose adverse environmental risks because of failures in the stormwater management system at some future time due to increased drainwater resulting in the very contamination that expect experts maintain are unlikely? That's a question.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't. Because we we design to a standard and that standard um exceeds industry norm. Um, and it's what MASTEP requires in their policy. Uh, we we design to the hundred-year storm, which is a factor of safety that's added to the stormwater uh system. Not only do we design to that standard, but we've also exceeded that standard. The volume that's required to hold that storm by almost ten percent. Um, we've also reduced the flows in the hundred where all we had to do was match the pre-development flow. So not only are we exceeding MASTEP standard, but MASTEP DEP standard already has design parameters to prevent potential failures and prevent adverse environmental risks.
I don't know who asked that question, but does anybody have any further questions with regard to that that particular one?
I do. Um, did uh Jim Emery um review this and what what are his thoughts on that?
On the stormwater management system?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'm not a stormwater expert, but I did review the information to uh if assess whether or not there was sufficient um, you know, uh, back redundancies to assure that this this uh, you know, that this stormwater system would be s- uh successful. But I don't want to claim to be, I'm a, I'm a hydrogeologist that deals with blasting. Yeah, I just wanted you to know I did do that, but it wasn't my, it was not the primary uh work of mine.
Mr. Ellison is here though, and I I thought I saw him, Mr. Mitchell, and he did review our stormwater management system.
Okay.
T E C. I don't, I I I can't see him right now, but he is. Peter, are you there to respond to Mr. Mitchell's question?
So Peter's hand is getting promoted right now. I think what I want to point out, Mr. Chairman, is that what I've done in my review and requests for their changes is to assure that content, that levels of contamination do not rise to the level of being a concern on site. In other words, I don't want to get to the point where we're actually dealing with contamination and having to to assure that the stormwater has to address it. Um, the the stormwater failure in terms of flooding is a different issue, but from my end of contamination, getting it outside of the of the box, so to speak. We've put a pretty tight um condition, very tight conditions on them to prevent that from occurring. So I just want you to be uh aware of that.
Yeah, no, I think you were pretty clear about that. All right, shall we move on?
You don't want to.
Chair Chairman Mitchell, I just want to, I just want to say, uh, Peter Ellison is here from T E C and um, I think the extent of my review is really to review the stormwater management system for conformance with state of Massachusetts standards. Um, and I have done so and and issued a letter that you know, documents that the the applicant has addressed thirty some odd comments that I had made as part of my initial review. Um, and in my opinion, the the stormwater system has been uh designed in a manner to meet those state standards.
Sorry, Mr. Mitchell.
I actually had a question, sorry. Uh, just, just in reference, Mr. Frappa has made reference to GIS mapping and USGS data being used as a reference in the design. And in my limited experience doing projects along the North Shore, that that information available on those sites has been uh grossly inaccurate. So I just want to make, I guess my concern is and recommendation is that you rely as much on uh any kind of onsite testing in the boreholes and everything else that you're doing for the soil analysis on the site and less so much in the GIS mapping in the uh the data you're getting from USGS. I don't know if Mr. Emery would agree with me or not, but that's my personal opinion.
No, I I would, I, I would agree with you that it would become more of an issue if the site was actually located on an area where um, we were relying on mass GIS data to to support design and and engineering. Um, but we're really not, we're, we're, we we know that the aquifer is in proximity to the development area, but based on the data that we have using test pits, we know that that aquifer does not encroach onto the property that's being developed. So then it becomes more of a receptor and um the information that exists on the mass GIS system is is perfectly adequate to evaluate it as a receptor. Um, and and when we do evaluate it as a receptor, uh, we're evaluating it it in in a more conservative manner. So um, and and we get into that a little bit later.
And let's move on.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question on stormwater. Uh, so this would be appropriate, which is.
I do have a section on it, Mr. Wheaton. I don't know.
I'm happy to wait, I'm happy to wait.
Is it okay?
Go ahead.
So this one is directed to Mr. Frappa. You you had made a statement and they asked that you um tell them whether there's the following G I, G E I observation um direct support or contradict the slideshow of Mr. Nielsen, and then that's that whole thing about, I mean, you obviously can read it. It's the characterization of the bedrock.
Right, yeah, um, how how about if we just skip over, I can, I can read it if you want it. Um.
No, no, you don't have to read it, just.
All right, all right, good. So let's just skip to the next slide, which has the map.
There you go.
There we go. So this was a slide that was was presented in the uh ransom uh PowerPoint presentation that um, I annotated with with flow arrows and uh what it shows is uh, it's a, it's a mass GIS map. It identifies the the uh medium yield aquifers that are that are in the area. And those are those shaded areas that exist um parallel with with Essex Street. That's that's uh to the to the north of what's called a non-aquifer area. Yeah, that's the one there. Then to the, to the north of that is another medium yield aquifer that's been identified on uh mass GIS system. And then uh on the northern end of uh Beck Pond is another uh medium yield aquifer. So.
Can everybody see my pointer so that?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Sorry, thank you.
So, so these are aquifers that are, were identified on mass GIS system and they are correlated with uh coarse grain deposits. Um, they're 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 water table conditions and uh yield uh between a hundred and a hundred and fifty gallons per minute uh based on typical types of unconsolidated materials that exist in uh in 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 these areas uh across Massachusetts that are, that were deposited in a similar way. So what what? So what wasn't shown on the ransom slide, uh, and, but it was verbally described were the, or the flow directions. So I thought it'd be worthwhile to at least acknowledge where the site is. And that's, um, the area right there that, that, uh, is the development area. Uh, that occurs on the gr- area of granite, which is a non-aquifer area. Uh, we've, we've evaluated the, um, the, the thickness of, of overburden deposits on, on top of that, the, of the granite through, through the test pitting that, that had been done. And we know that there's just a thin layer of, um, overburden that, that covers the bedrock. So from a groundwater standpoint of, of, of flow, um, there's very little water within that non-aquifer area, right? So all these, all the water exists within fractures. There's, there's no porosity within granite. And we measure the amount of water that's present in these fractures, uh, but we call aquifer store activity. And store activity in granite is extremely low. It's measured, it, it, it's measured in, uh, a dimensionsless unit. Um, but it's on the order of like point zero, 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 four to minus six. Extremely low store activity. You compare that to the porosity that exists within these medium yield aquifers, which is like 25%. And the volume that, that is present within the porosity is what gets filled with water. So each of these aquifers has between sixty five and over a hundred and forty five million gallons of water held in storage. And that compares to about 10,000 gallons of storage within, uh, the water that is present below the development area. So, but by contrast, the, the amount of water is, is like inconsequential to the overall water balance in this area. So, um, we have these flow arrows that they show the direction of flow within these aquifers. And, uh, their flow is to the east. They, it daylights to surface water in the area near, near Essex Street. And then re-enters, uh, the other medium yield aquifer in the north end of Beck Pond. So for a particle of water to travel from the non-aquifer area to the medium yield aquifer, it's, it, it, it's going to take a lot of time. And once it enters that aquifer, whatever contaminant that could be there is going to get, uh, dispersed and diluted by millions and millions of gallons of water. And, and what you have to understand is that the amount of water that's present in this, in this non-aquifer area is very, very small. And the measures that we're taking to, uh, minimize the amount of, of, uh, well, in this case, the concern is nitrate. Um, is, is going to prevent any detection of a contaminant in those medium yield aquifers. Uh, just simply because number one, the concentration of the nitrate loading in the non-aquifer area is going to be less than 10 milligrams per liter. Uh, based on the testing or the controls that we're going to have in place. And then under a worst case condition, if 10 milligrams per liter ever entered into the medium yield aquifer and you monitored that with a well, it, it, it wouldn't be detectable. You, 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 you just wouldn't be able to, um, indicate that there's any type of elevated concentration of nitrate just based on the natural attenuation that, that occurs. So, so the important point is that we can talk about the presence of these medium yield aquifers, but in no way can they become contaminated from the site just based on the low quantities of water that exist within the non-aquifer area and the engineering controls that we're, we're implementing to, uh, prevent any contamination from, from leaving that work area.
Would you say that again, Rick? Just so you can emphasize that for everyone.
Your conclusion, yeah?
The, the, the last part. So, so with the engineering controls that, that we're implementing in the, in the work area, we cannot have any groundwater that, that would contain nitrate above the groundwater quality standard. And if in a worst case condition, if we did have 10 milligrams per liter and it eventually made its way into the medium yield aquifer, it would, the, the resulting concentration wouldn't result in any indic- in any increase of the existing nitrate concentration that's there.
So Jim, is this, uh, comport with, uh, your understanding of the hydrology of this area?
Oh yeah, I would, you, you speaking to me, yeah, just, yeah. Just so everybody knows, I go by Jamie. So when you said Jim, I didn't.
I'm sorry, Jamie.
That, that's right. Uh, here's one thing. Yes, I concur with that, uh, assessment. And I will also say that, and, and not to get into any kind of debate here. I do not disagree with ransom's concerns about potential impacts to the water supply for Essex, Hamilton, Manchester by the Sea. I've looked at that carefully. I don't believe a flow path could get to any one of those sources, uh, whether it had contamination in it or not. Um, if I was the representative of those water supplies, I would, and I was asked, am I concerned about this blasting on my, my water supply? The answer would be no. And it is all about groundwater flow directions and it's all about what Rick just mentioned, the amount of water that would be potentially impacted to move in there. I think I calculated, we calculated, um, in my group here about 300 million gallons of water in storage. Um, compared to, you know, one to maybe 1,000 to maybe 10,000 gallons of water that would be removed from the excavation of the rock. So this is a very, very, a minor amount. Now granted, I have asked for a, 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 you know, a study to be done. We can talk about that down the road, but I, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, uh, I concur with that and, uh, have looked at that thoroughly.
I ask one quick point of clarity. The wells of the neighboring, uh, people on Chewbacca there, uh, is that water in motion or is that coming from the stored water of the aquifer?
So that's a very good question. Um, groundwater typically flows at zero unless it's pumped. Uh, I mean, typically we don't put, you know, they're in, in, in bedrock. In, unless there's a major fracture system that is there, uh, and it's pumped. And then we increase the flow rate through the rock itself. It's one of the reasons why you have high mineralization in rocks, rock wells, bedrock wells is the iron. It's in contact with the rock itself. So it takes on some of the character of the rock. But, um, what we are doing in this case is to assure by putting in monitoring equipment in those wells. Uh, we're going to be measuring, and I don't know if everybody knows this, but we, the town, me, uh, being myself have requested and required that water level monitoring equipment go into each of those wells and water levels be collected every 30 minutes. So that's over a month prior to starting the, the blasting. It's throughout the entire construct blasting and construction period and for a 30 day period after all the project is complete. But that would be 30 minutes, a water level will be collected every 30 minutes in every well that we're given permission to monitor. And we're asking for every person in the Chewbacca Road and that northeast area to go, you know, to allow monitoring to occur. It would only be in their best interest.
Anybody else, Mr. Mitchell?
No, maybe we should move on.
Okay. Um, this was just a tester map. Okay. Now it's the, it, um, public comments. Does Mr. Mitchell, if, if you would like, and Ms. Crouch would like to have opened it to ransom, um, this is the point in time.
Okay. Ransom, Elizabeth?
Sure. I'll, I'll start and then I'll probably, um, ask, uh, Mr. Nelson to, to join in for a moment. Um, Jill, would you be able to put up, uh, the original questions that Ms. Crouch had?
These are, Ms. Crouch. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so back to, I don't know whether, um, we could just quickly talk about the theoretical and the practical. I don't think we've, um, been requesting anything that is really theoretical and practical. What we've been, um, suggesting all along is that while we understand Mr. Emery's approach to looking at the blasting plan impacts by focusing some analysis, uh, specific to the time period of blasting. Um, we've been asked to look at not just sort of a blasting plan, but the site work as a whole and how this development might make changes over the long term. Um, so not just during the construction phase, but once the development is fully in place. And so what we've been, um, suggesting is that there be, um, some of the common monitoring tools that we see in our business every day. Um, it's, it's the cost of doing business in sensitive areas. And those would include things like, uh, two to three monitoring or gauging events that span the seasons. So that might take a, a seven to eight month period to, um, allow for high water and low water seasonal data. Um, it would involve transducers. It would involve rock wells as well as overburdened wells. Um, and perhaps some fate and transport analysis for, um, nitrates, not just to reflect the blasting, but also the septic system. Um, and having a baseline for both ecological and water quality data. Um, and I think this not only helps the town, um, in understanding whether there will be impacts, but it also helps the applicant. So that if later on, um, there are uh, perceived impacts, they'll have a baseline that they can use to evaluate whether those are, are just real or in, in fact, just perceived impacts. So, um, you know, we, we also would recommend a residential well survey because we have knowledge that some of the uh, wells along Chewbacca Road are actually quite shallow. In fact, uh, I believe one of the neighbors right across the street only has a 30 foot, uh, well that they're relying on for their water supply. So in order to make some of the, um, statements that have been made about what, how water is going to behave and what contaminants may or may not, um, show up in either the surface water or groundwater surrounding the site. Uh, we've been advocating, um, for the last seven months to collect some site-specific data. And I, I believe that if that had been done at the outset, we'd all be talking around real data right now. And that, that helps everybody. Um, so on, on that point, I'm going to maybe turn it over to Tom to speak a little bit more about, um, the, the rod porosity. And I don't know, Tom, you, you let me know if you think we should just wait till we get to the last slide of, uh, um, of Jill's presentation material, but I, I, I think what was, uh, recently pulled up by Mr. Frappa might be something we could, uh, speak to now.
Elizabeth, two questions.
Sure.
Um, do you agree with the, um, the, uh, flow charts that we just looked at?
I think that the, um, information on this slide is, um, not very detailed. And so, um, it's maybe an.
No, no, no. I asked, is, is it incorrect?
I don't have the site-specific information in front of me, nor do I have Mr. Frappa's resources to verify those arrows. It may be correct. But I don't know.
The second question is that the applicant is proposing, uh, monitoring local wells, um, prior to 30 days before blasting. So won't that develop a baseline of existing water conditions?
No, I, I believe that that would be incomplete. So what, what that study is designed to do is look at the nitrate impacts from blasting on the area immediate to where the blasting is. And so what we've been advocating for is a more expansive set of wells and set of information that goes beyond looking at just the blasting impacts, but looks at the site development in its entirety to gather some of the similar information, um, that is in what is proposed around the blast area. So.
So the, so the eight wells that they're monitoring wells, they're proposing it, or you're, uh, saying they're insufficient?
That's correct. Yeah.
And why is that?
Because they're focused on looking at where the nitrates from blasting might go. They're not focused on the site development as a whole, nor are they focused at looking long-term beyond the period of blasting. So we would advocate for some additional site-specific parameters and locations.
So you would expand those, uh, monitoring wells?
Yes. And we would also include, um, things like staff gauges and transducers um, that would be focused over in the vicinity of the streams and wetlands and, um, septic area. Leach field.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be happy to work with Mr. Frappa and Mr. Emery to discuss ideas as to, you know, how we might go about something that's more comprehensive.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, uh, add to that discussion for a second?
Please, Ja- uh, Jamie.
Yeah, thanks. Um, one thing I want to make clear is that we're not just looking at nitrate. Um, if you look at the amount of water quality sampling, and this is something that I asked and applicant accepted, was to test each of those individual wells every two weeks for sodium, copper, iron, manganese, arsenic, calcium, aluminum, nitrate, nitrite and turbidity. Every two weeks during the blasting period, and we're talking about the blasting period and I'll let Rick tell. I, I don't know exactly how long it is, but if it's six months, nine months, a year, whatever that time period is. Um, I believe that with, we, we're talking about having 20 monitoring wells altogether. That's eight onsite and 12 offsite. I, uh, understand that people want to, you know, have data, but I have been in this business a long time and more data is not always better data. And one of the things that I struggle with would be to purposely identify, um, the concerns because we're talking about a 7,500 gallon per day septic system. That is a frighteningly small amount of input into the system of a major, uh, and if you look at the water balance, it's, it's, it's not, it's just very challenging to come up with any kind of relationship that would cause an adverse impact. And I think that it's, I just don't want it to be, uh, a disservice to say that we could potentially impact public water supply wells when in my view, and having done this forever, this is not in its, there's no possible way that we would adversely impair these, these municipal water systems. So I, with all due respect, yes, you could put more additional monitoring wells in there, but we are putting in, well, I would say the town is requiring that there is pre-testing, pre-sampling, pre-drilling, pre-monitoring, and then throughout the entirety. And on top of that, we've put the clamp, the town has put the clamp down harder by saying, we're not going to allow you to have contamination on the property, period. We are going to stop you if we see that there's a contamination issue onsite. So I, 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 I just, um, um, I don't think that a regional study now, if we were doing a large groundwater withdrawal, let's just say that this site was a groundwater site that you were going to withdraw a million gallons a day out of. Now you'll be looking at people around the area to make sure that the.
I'm not advocating for a regional study. I'm advocating for a site-specific one. So I'm advocating for.
That wasn't in the presentation. The presentation that I watched and looked at, I have in front of me now is more regional. So.
We've, we've, we've been advocating for more site-specific data since our initial involvement with this. And, and it's our, it's our belief that if some additional site-specific data had been generated seven months ago, we, we would probably all be, 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 uh, done with the discussion at this point. I think there's a, there's a pretty, um, easy avenue to gathering some additional information. And, and by, by the, the presentation data that's coming, you can even see that if it, if you have a 7,500 gallon per day system um, of, of septic, uh, discharge flowing into Beck Pond, which I, I didn't put these figures out, but your, your figures in this presentation say Beck Pond has 38,000 uh, gallons per day. That means roughly 20% of what would be coming into Beck Pond would be coming from the flow from the septic system. So it's, it's not unreasonable to be able to monitor what are those conditions today? And what might they look like in the future over the course of this development? So, um, no, we're not advocating. So, no, we're not advocating for a regional study. We're advocating for some additional site-specific monitoring points.
And I think Rick was referring to 38 million gallons of water and storage in Beck Pond. I think that's what he was referring to, not to an input.
I believe I believe he had 38,000 gallons per day as the discharge, the estimated discharge from that that medium meal aquifer into Beck Pond, if I recall correctly.
But I think. That's that is correct. That's a cross-sectional area of discharge on a daily basis from a 65 million gallon reservoir. So so we don't have a direct pipe going right to that discharge point.
There is a stream that goes just just beneath the.
Correct. We don't have a direct pipe that goes to that stream either.
Right.
Things diffuse in groundwater. What what you're advocating is something that we do for landfill projects. When we're citing a landfill, the regulations in many states require one upgrading well and three downgrading wells to assess flow conditions, hydrogeologic conditions, groundwater quality, that sort of thing. Then as a complexity grows, then you need more wells. And you need more work, hydraulic monitoring, et cetera, to better understand the hydrogeologic conditions. And why do we do that for landfill sites? It's because there's risk. The risk is from regulated chemicals leaching into the groundwater from a breach in a liner, right? So there's volatile organics, semi-volatile organics, PCBs, metals, all kinds of contaminants. In a residential setting, I I just can't understand what contaminants of concern exist. So I think that's what I would like to hear from from the opposition who keep bringing up this this issue of risk. Nitrate, for sure. People could argue phosphorus, but these are nutrients, the chemicals that, you know, are detrimental to the environment. The environment needs phosphorus, the environment needs nitrate. We don't have those. We're, you know, you're not going to sustain plant life.
I think, you know, part of part of what where we're coming from is that in order, you know, yes, nitrogen is a nutrient, phosphorus is a nutrient, they're necessary for life. But the challenges in excess, those those nutrients can cause really harmful effects down gradient, whether that is to drinking water, to surface water. I think that the, you know, to go a little bit back to what Mr. Emery was saying about, you know, that the water supply wells being impacted. I think, you know, I typically would, or I generally would agree that there's a pretty low risk of the existing wells becoming contaminated from this site. It's a very torturous path from the site to those wells. But I think what is missing from that context is that population growth is continuing. There are often new demands on water resources, and Beck Pond exists as a potential future water resource. Without understanding the background condition of what is in the groundwater flowing in that aquifer adjacent to the site into Beck Pond, and understanding what impact, if any, the development might have on that through septic or through other discharges, you know, surface water runoff and so forth. It's really difficult to assess what the what the potential impact might be downstream. If it is something that can cause over time, nutrification and eutrophication of the surface water source that, or the potential surface water source, I should say, that could become a really significant problem. And so, you know, doing things like a nitrate nitrogen fate and transport model through the the existing aquifer, you know, that that septic system is not located in the groundwater protection overlay district, but it is located in the geologic unit that makes up the aquifer. You know, that overlay district is an administrative boundary. The aquifer is extends beyond that. You know, by by the estimates that you put together, Mr. Frappa, 38,000 gallons per day is the discharge into Beck Pond from that aquifer. 7,500 gallons per day would be added into that aquifer. And that would, you know, typically septic systems have relatively high nitrate concentrations. I think it's very reasonable to request that a nitrate fate and transport model be completed to look at actually how how much is this mixing? Where does it mix moving downstream? And does it have the potential to impact those downstream receptors? Because right now, there's there's no site-specific information to support that there won't be an impact downstream.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to actually jump, can I jump in here for a second? Because I think, first of all, what's interesting enough, David Lash testified and provided nine pages of very detailed information about the eutrophication of all those ponds based on the homes that surround the various ponds. And you're saying that now you're saying that we have 35,000 gallons flowing into Beck Pond. What you seem to forget is it's being diluted into millions of gallons of water that's in the aquifer before it flows in. It doesn't go directly from the septic system into the 35,000 gallons. And if you look to the north of the picture that's on the screen, you'll see there are dozens of homes that have septic systems that are leaching into the aquifer already. And they have, they're leaching not only nitrates and phosphates and basano and what else is coming from those. So this is like trying to shave pieces of ice here. It's like, I'm not getting this big problem. You guys would like to monitor this. That's wonderful. In theory, it would be wonderful to monitor, but what you have to identify is any specific points of pollution. It's like, I'm not hearing, you know, any specific.
It would not be acceptable.
Suggest is that you're correct, there are a bunch of homes already adding to what Beck Pond is receiving. And right now, you know, we we don't have data in front of us that says whether Beck Pond is in a healthy state or not. We don't know, you know, where they're, where that sort of tipping point is. And so what we're suggesting is that by having some additional site-specific data and understanding the site's potential contribution to the surface water features around it, whether that's the 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 streams that feed Beck Pond or Beck Pond itself, having some additional site-specific data would allow you to make a more informed decision about the potential impacts of this development.
Yeah, but I'm not getting, here's the, here's the problem I'm having with this whole presentation is you're saying we need all this monitoring to potentially capture the theoretical potential of some possible downstream pollutants getting into Beck Pond. If that's such a concern, then why doesn't Save Chewbacca Woods do that? And then share that with the applicant.
Because it's the applicant's responsibility, they're incumbent to demonstrate that they're.
No, 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 no. No, the applicant has, we've already got peer review that has told us that that there's a minuscule chance of any kind of detrimental impact having from this project. So you're just keep telling us we need more, more data, more data, more data. But you haven't substantiated that there's a significant real-time demonstrable threat. So it's like, I'm all, if there was something that you could point to and said, there is a serious point of contamination that isn't already going on by the 300 homes that surround Chewbacca Lake, the homes that surround Beck Pond, that surround, that surround the farm and the septic system. I'd be delighted to hear that, but all I hear is about more monitoring, more monitoring, and we have to know more. When in fact, we're not demonstrating that there's a problem.
Can the applicant demonstrate that the development cannot cause harm? Will the pharmaceuticals that people dump down the toilet and land that land in the septic system?
Let's not go there because that's happening with the hundreds of homes surround all those ponds. They're dumping tens of thousands of gallons of septics into those ponds. We don't know the pesticides they're using, whether they're washing their cars, whether they're changing their oils. Who knows what's going on in those neighborhoods and houses? So I'm focusing on this project and demonstratable contamination coming from this site that's going to adversely affect the pond. You have failed to demonstrate that to any significant.
I can't get on site to generate data. I'm not allowed on site. So perhaps we could have done this if we were allowed on site.
Let me add to this point, though. I think you're you're you've hit this thing on the head. And that is, I think there's about 63 million gallons of water stored in that aquifer that's down in that one little section. There's over 100 million gallons of water stored in Beck Pond. And you're talking about a water system, a treatment facility that's going to be state-of-the-art. And I'm going to going to speak to the construction or the septic designer. But it has been designed and approved, as I understand it, by the state. And the state is very sensitive about adversely impairing potential actors. They just are. This is one of their charges, is to make sure that that does not occur. And so with the dilution that's available and with the treatment that is going to occur in the septic drain field system, in the in the septic treatment facility, you know, I I think we're, you know, I would concur with the comment that we're shaving ice because that is what we're doing. And and I really, as an individual, these are, this is not a, this is not something that I'm concerned about to be to be completely 100% specific about this. I know there are people that are concerned. I'm not diminishing the people who are concerned about this. But you're talking about over 160 million gallons of water plus recharge to that system that's going to be compared to a 7,500 gallon discharge that's going to be treated. I think at this point, you know, I don't know, there's nothing else that I could add to that.
Yeah, I think we need to move on.
Happy to move on.
Okay, so verified resource areas, there was one of the questions were regarding the resource areas. So I thought it was going to be a good idea to have Greg Hockman from Williams and Spradges just identify those for the board's purposes. I don't know whose questions these were, but I think it makes sense. So Greg, could you just let people know?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
For the record, Greg Hockman from Williams and Spradges, would I be able to share my screen?
Oh, I, well, I can't. I can stop. Can can he share, Mr. Chair?
That's up to.
Yep. So this is the just the blown-up version of the plan that was just shown on the on the prior slide. And what I wanted to do is just identify where the vernal pools were identified. And that was vetted through the permitting process with the Conservation Commission and reviewed by their peer review consultant, DeRosa Environmental Consulting. And ultimately, the plan you see here accurately reflects the resource areas that were part of the permitting process through the Conservation Commission. Going into this project, prior to delineating the wetlands on site, we knew that there was a certified vernal pool on the property. And that's shown down in this this wetland here. This is a large bordering vegetated wetland that eventually channelizes into an intermittent stream that flows parallel with the agricultural field and ultimately through the culverts that go into Chewbacca Road. So there was a certified vernal pool. And after reviewing the resource area boundaries, we identified three other areas that had the potential to be vernal pools, in our opinion. But we had to hold off a couple of months until the active vernal pool season started. And we waited for the green light from the Conservation Commission and working with the peer review consultant. We selected three separate occasions where we visited the site to look for obligate vernal pool species, which are really required to the demon area suitable to be called a vernal pool and ultimately be able to certify it as a vernal pool. There was a vernal pool identified up here. And this is just off Chewbacca Road. There was an isolated wetland that we identified as the L series. And within that isolated wetland, we found it to be a very productive vernal pool. And we did find evidence, enough evidence, that that could be certified down the road. We looked at this isolated wetland, it's the M and the N series, which is located up on top of the hill, quite higher than Chewbacca Road itself. It was nestled between some ledgy outproppy areas, and it looked to us like it was very shallow. And it turned out to be very shallow. I think the deepest portion was maybe a foot. And it didn't appear to hold water long enough. We didn't find any evidence in that area for it to be deemed a vernal pool. And we did look at that on four occasions, not just the three. There was a little wetland down here, an isolated wetland that we identified as the A series. And that isolated wetland did have a couple egg masses. You're required to have at least three for it to be deemed certifiable. But what we did with the Conservation Commission was we conceded that it more than likely would be on most, most years. And it might have just been an off-year. So we did agree to call that a vernal pool. And then we also went back out, this was the third or fourth time with the peer review consultant. And we identified a bunch of little areas over here that didn't look very natural. It looked like they may have been old irrigation ditches, but they were deep enough, in our opinion, that they could hold long, hold water long enough to support obligate vernal pool species. So again, we conceded that those more than likely were vernal pools, and we called them vernal pools on our plan with the Conservation Commission. So in summary, we have a certified vernal pool, a vernal pool that we found evidence that could be certified. And we found another isolated wetland that may or may not be a vernal pool. And I should point out too, as far as the state's concerned with vernal pool habitat, the vernal pool habitat stops at the resource boundary that it's within. So in other words, there's no buffer zone to a vernal pool at the state level. However, the Hamilton Conservation Bylaw and Regulations have an associated upland resource area that's associated with vernal pools that extends outward 100 feet from the mean-high water of those pools. So vernal pool habitat-wise, we're within the 100-foot buffer zone. It doesn't extend any further out. And as I'm sure you've heard during other hearings for this project, we've worked really hard to keep all work outside of the commission's jurisdiction, with the exception of the three temporary activities that we filed a permit application with them for. So the portion of the project that I call the project, which is where the roadway and units would be, is outside the 100-foot buffer zone and outside vernal pool habitat. Let me just clear my screen here. I know that was was a lot. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
So can we go back to the questions that you were?
I'm going, yep, I'm going to do that right now. I apologize. I'm just trying to reshare my screen. And of course, I'm having issues now for some ungodly reason. I apologize.
Follow it up with me, with me, B. Jill.
Oh, here I go. I'm sorry about that. For me, it's a long night.
So.
Okay, so it was actually, I apologize, I have to go back. I think it's this one. Yes. And then protected wildlife habitat, Mr. Hockman, that's part of your purview because you have to check it off with the NOI, so.
Yeah, I should mention that too. So the the site itself, it's not mapped as an area of critical environmental concern. It's not mapped as estimated or priority habitat by the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. The only outstanding resource water we have on site is the certified vernal pool. It's not a nitrogen-sensitive area. It's not in the interim wellhead protection area. It's not in the Zone 1, it's not in the Zone 2. And the ice, intimate stream that flows through the property is not a map tributary to a public water supply.
So then the next, thank you very much, Mr. Hockman. So the next question, Rick, there was a question posed. Uh, there was a question posed. Did you consider whether blasting around the vernal pool? And the wetlands would adversely affect the water table or the wildlife and/or the wildlife habitat?
Um, yes, we, we, we did. Um. So uh, the, the wetlands and, and vernal pools that. We just spoke about, they're all located within the uh, the non-aquifer area, except probably that area that he just. Flagged on that northern boundary, but they're uh, very distant from the uh, from the blasting area itself. And uh, the, these pools though that exist near. The working area of the site, uh, they occur in topographic lows, so they collect precipitation and, and snowmelt. And uh, uh, the water that, that collects there is temporarily, temporarily retained. Um, and because. The, the bottom of these wetland uh, bodies are, are full of organic rich muck. Uh, buried detrital matter, you know, that causes a, uh, or creates a low permeability skin on the bottom of the uh, the wetland. That then sits on top of uh, you know, the, the, the soil that's there. Which then sits on top of the, the non-porous crystalline rock. So essentially you have the, the, this bowl that sits there and collects water when. Uh, transpiration rates aren't enough to um, overwhelm the amount of, of uh, of, of recharge that, that occurs. So we maintain a hundred foot. Buffer around each of these uh, wetland areas and, and vernal pool areas. And uh, uh, there is just not. Uh, not enough interaction between the, the, the fractured bedrock. And, and these wetlands to cause any type of uh, recharge discharge disturbance to them. So I, like, I see this condition on my own property. Uh, we live in an area where bedrock occurs within like a foot of the ground surface. And there's a stream that crosses our property and it uh, it's in size, probably thirty, forty feet. Um, and uh, I have all kinds of wetland vegetation sitting within fifty feet of the creek's edge. And it just collects there because it just drains very poorly. Uh, through, through the rock, um, and all that detrital matter that's there. So. You know, I, I see this on a daily basis. Um, and, and, and having essentially a cliff face that does weep. In the winter time, I do see those icicles hanging out there. Um, those, those wetlands come back each year and they, they've come back, you know, for. The thirty years I've lived there. So it, it, it's not. Inconceivable that by creating these, these forty foot cuts into the rock. That we're not going to change the hydrogeology at all. It, it, it's just, it's something that. Um, will, will, you know, um, it, it, it's just cutting the rock is not going to affect. The uh, the, the recharge discharge relationship for, for each of these. Each of these wetlands based on the low permeability skin that they have beneath them.
Great, thank you. And then can you, they want you to confirm that there is absolutely no chance that the blasting and removals. Around the wetlands and vernal pool on the east side, which is. I, I, I'm this, I assume it's this wetland, but because there's not much. I mean, there's a little blasting in here. I'm not sure. Somebody who wrote the question could respond. Um. But basically, can you form, there's no chance that we're going to damage these resources? It's kind of the same question, I think.
Correct. It, it's the same, same condition. There, there's this low permeability skin that exists. Um, and there's no hu- real hydraulic connection between the bedrock. And the bed, the bedrock below these ponds and the bedrock that we're removing.
So now whoever asked this question, Mr. Mitchell, I don't know if there's a follow-up, if anybody else has a follow-up question for Mr. Frappa?
Yeah, they, whoever wrote the question, if they have a follow-up or.
That question was specifically addressed to ransom.
Okay. So you're asking ransom? If they can confirm there's absolutely no chance of blasting and removals as proposed around the wetlands and vernal pool on the upside slope east of the development? Would alter or damage these resources? You're asking that of ransom?
Yes.
That's an awfully open-ended question. Not sure how any professional licensed could, person could answer that. But go ahead, ransom.
Well, I think that that's the question that Mr. Frappa just answered as a licensed. Uh, professional as well. Um, I think. We tend to not answer things as an absolutely no chance. Um, because in our experience, um, that's not how nature works. There's always an exception to every rule. So I would, I would not confirm that there's absolutely no chance. I would say there is a chance.
And what is, what is the chance?
But I think, I think what we would um, you know. Uh, be thinking about when we would, you know, when we evaluate the vernal pools and the wetlands. In relation to the proposed blasting is, is really um. Does this change the stormwater runoff condition? Um, so you know, when uh, you're working through the construction cycle, which in this case is going to last for quite some time. Um, you know, do those, how well do we understand the, the way the project has changed the local hydrology? How are, how are those um, impacts going to um, manifest in the, the wetlands and vernal pools? So, you know, simple answer is I wouldn't confirm that there's absolutely no chance.
Can you give us, can you tell us what the chance is so that we can actually respond?
I, I think I just did, Jill. It's, it's really, you know, how does the, the, the construction cycle itself? Where the, the hydrologic changes um, have occurred? Um, you know, you, you do change even the uh, the bedrock that remains could be. Um, altered in its fracture pattern as a result of, of the, the blasting itself. Not to mention you've review, removed a certain amount of footage of, of rock material. And we would expect to see that have some changes to the hydrology in it. It may or may not ultimately affect a, a particular vernal pool, but I, I would never, you know. Go on a stand and say there's no chance because, you know, obviously it's nature. Uh, we don't always know how. Uh, have the ability to predict how it's going to respond.
Right. So Rick, I mean, I, I, this, the question needs to be answered. So. Can you respond, Rick? And maybe you and Elizabeth can have a little dialogue because she's saying there's a possibility. It sounds to me like it's remote. But if it's a possibility, she's going to say it. But everything has a possibility. So I just need to get it because the board needs to understand better. Yeah. It's too open-ended a response.
The only way for, for there to be um, a concern is if there's. Open fractures that hydraulically connect. The vernal pool to the bedrock. And if that were the case, then. I can't see how these vernal pools would even exist. Because essentially you'd have a drain below the pool. So. If there's water in these pools, then they, they, they just can't be hydrologically connected to the bedrock.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, because it would drain it?
Yes, yeah. Based on the topography that's there. Yep. Yes.
I think, I think, you know what? Uh, I think, Mr. Poor, you probably want Ms. Ransom to answer. So if, if we're telling you that it's a perched. Area, it's unconnected to anything. And he's telling you it's not hydrology, hydraulically connected through fractures. Can you explain to Mr. Poor your point?
So, uh, the point would be that when you strip the site of the topsoil and the trees. And some of that rock. The stormwater will run off in a different way than it does currently. Right now you have. Uh, particularly during the uncontrolled condition. That happens during construction where you don't have your permanent stormwater features um, in place yet. So um, what maybe perhaps was absorbed by some of the leaf litter that existed under those trees. Um, the. Tens of feet of rock that it had time to go through. Um, that rock's no longer there. Those trees are no longer there. You're going to have stormwater runoff that has a potential to. Interact with those wetlands in a way that it doesn't currently, under the existing condition. And that's. I mean, I'm a hundred percent sure why we were, you know, asked to answer the question, but that's.
I honestly don't know.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. We, we would never say it's a hundred percent no chance because when you change the hydrology, you open up different chances.
Yeah.
There is a comment on that, if I may.
We're not changing the hydrology on the up gradient side of the site.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Um. Was this question or affiliated or related question. Uh, addressed during the Conservation Commission hearings?
So it, it isn't because we were, we aren't proposing any activity within a hundred feet. So everybody has to remember, like, we're. The DEP says if you're protecting a hundred feet, you protect the vernal pool. So we're respecting a hundred feet. So it would never come up with the Conservation Commission, Mr. Mitchell. So absolutely not. I mean, the area that, that this is describing, just so the board knows, it's one hundred feet away from an up gradient water source. Which everybody needs to recognize, which is what Mr. Frappa wants to point out. But maybe if Mr. Poor could speak to what he's really looking for. For an answer, we could vet it better for him to give him information that would help him. Because I think that both engineers are a little bit.
I have my answer, too. It's um. I have my answer. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Let's move on.
Okay, cool. Thank, I'm going to go on to the next one. Okay. So here is um, verified resource areas again. Um, are there any special sensitivities at the development site? Um, there was. Greg already went through it. He already told you what the a- actions are. Is there any rationale that would not be deemed to be? Okay, this, it, this was basically, somebody had asked if you could impose. Future, more strict regulations because of the effects that climate change have that do not currently exist. I just, I, in re, in, in, I apologize to whoever wrote this. It's just that. Uh, you can't change the game in the middle of the, you can't change the rules in the middle of a game. So the rules are what the rules are and to attempt to change them to make them future, cut some kind of amorphous future condition that you don't know. That aren't applicable is basically arbitrary. I, i- in, not legally tenable. You are not entitled to do that. So I don't really know. Is there any rationale that, I, I guess I don't understand the question. The, I think the person's asking, can we impose a greater standard because there's sensitivities, but there aren't any sensitivities. So. I think whoever wrote this question, it would really be helpful if we were to talk about it. I, I wrote the, I put in the second parts, the two, two paragraphs. I, I just don't know how to explain it to have somebody.
So why don't, why don't we just let the person who um, wrote that question? Um, either ask it or rephrase it or ask.
I love the questions. And basically it was for planning purposes. I, I said unreasonably oppressive. But I, just by way of an example, I, I heard on the news yesterday. That it's likely at some point in the future that the red line and portions of the blue line will be underwater. So yes, yes, we can build, we can build for today. But we know the future is probably going to involve considerably more rainfall and, and aberrant weather patterns. And so my, you know, my suggestion was. Uh, and, and my thought was that yes, you can meet the standards for today, which are backward looking. Or we can anticipate to make a better project, uh, what is likely to occur in the future.
I get it.
I don't think that's a valid thing to do because I think uh, there's too much chance for a mistake to be made. We don't know what's going to happen.
Oh, I think we do know what's going to happen in the environment.
You interrupted me. Uh, we don't know what's going to occur in the future. And we shouldn't try to predict the future. We can only deal with what we know now. So to try and do that.
You know, that's actually called, that's actually called a form of human behavior called myopia.
That was a hot club.
Yes, and, and.
Then it's kind of eyesight, too.
I, I actually think there was a very good um. Discussion of this earlier when the, when Granite said that they had engineered the system. For the hundred year uh, storm.
Yep.
And we know that in the last two or three decades. Um, hundred year floods and hundred year storms have become ten year floods and ten year storms. And that's going to uh, increase. So we would certainly be not unreasonable saying that. You know, could we have this site engineered to be? You know, today's hundred year storm plus twenty-five percent, fifty percent, some reasonable number more. Water. Than currently we have because things are going to get wetter. I, I mean, it's not, it's not.
So Bill, can I ask a question?
Certainty to happen is not an unreasonable request.
So Bill, here's the, here's the question, Bill. I, 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 I agree with you and I agree with Marnie. We're all going to, we have to adapt to a, a new future. That we're not going to like. Um, so the question is, and we're a regulatory body. Is what standard you pick to enforce here? Because uh, Jill is right. Um, they are accountable and, and must take into account current standards. So to go beyond those, the question is, well, how far? And at what?
Well, I actually asked some MIT colleagues.
Let me finish, let me finish, Bill, 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 let me finish, let me finish because I want your answer. And at what cost to make those adjustments?
Well, first of all, the hundred year storm incidence and severity is changing every year.
It is.
Yes, so.
No, I, I'm agreeing.
And, and, and people in engineering and science are being very cautious these days and saying, you know. We really should build in a little bit of cushion here because it's quite clear what's going to happen in the future. And I don't think there's anything in our reg, in our regulations that says we have to use the fifty year with the hundred year. Or the five hundred year storm. Um, not to my knowledge. I mean, so I, I can stand corrected on that. So if we wanted to be a little more cautious. Um, I don't think we would be extending our reach. That's my own guess.
So I, I will, I can respond to that easily and I'm going to have Brent talk to it, Mr. Wheaton, because I think he's going to. Address yours and Ms. Crouch's concerns very easily. It is, it is exceptionally outside of your reach. You have absolutely no discretion to change the protocol. The, the standard storm events are listed in your local bylaw. As well as in the Mass DEP. However, I'm going to have Brent talk to it because Brent did over-design. Brent was conservative and Brent did provide cushion. So you don't have to ask us to go above and beyond. Brent already built into the system a conservative approach. However, any attempt to, to change the standards is absolutely not legal. It, it is not within your authority. However, Brent, explain to Mr. Wheaton and Ms. Crouch, because I think their concerns are valid. I mean, we all know. What's going on. And I think it's important to just reiterate one more time what you had said before about the stormwater system, if you wouldn't mind. And then we'll, we'll have a discussion about stormwater soon too, Mr. Wheaton.
Yeah, there's a few things. Um, a few things of the corrections. I don't think hundred year storms have become ten year storms. Um, that, that drastic of a change is, is not what we're witnessing. Um, also, the, the Mass DEP regulations are not backward looking. Um, they're proven, they're tested. Um, they were implemented a, a few years back. But they're still very robust today, especially compared to standards of states nearby and, and other municipalities or, or states in the area. Um, so Mass DEP has very strict standards and we meet those standards. We actually exceed those standards. So we are reducing stormwater flows in the hundred year. We're not just checking for flooding conditions. But we're actually designing the entire system to a hundred year flow, which is a redundancy in itself. We've also, we've exceeded that by adding additional capacity to the stormwater ponds by an additional ten percent. It is very uh, custom for engineers to build in factors of safety. The hundred year storm is a factor of safety in itself. But we take it a step further and make sure that we have additional redundancies built into our model. To, to make sure that there's no harm um, downstream and try to prevent as much harm as possible, or prevent any harm from happening downstream. Um, so that's, that's basically concluding the, the talk about the, the stormwater.
Does that assist you, Ms. Coach and, and, and Mr. Wheaton? Should we move on or?
Yeah.
Just a little bit of additional insight.
Just a little bit of additional insight from, uh, from another engineer. The way I read this is more of a concern than a question, I guess. In, in the state of Massachusetts, we'll impose different regulations. And it's incumbent on all of us as engineers and designing systems uh, with regards to water and anything sustainable, carbon emissions and whatnot, that we forecast, we, we, we basically forecast and think about these new regulations because there will be imposed fees and fines if you aren't able to achieve whatever those future goals might be. Um, and that's a challenge that all engineers right now in the industry are dealing with. And we do our best to, to address them, but every project, every development, every operating facility will be impacted by regulations that do change. So, um, that's, I think more of a concern and warning than, than anything else with this question.
Thank you. Um, public comment period. I don't know if, um, Mr. Mitchell. Kind of had the question, we had a discussion with I don't know if there's additional comments. I don't want to shut anybody off at this point.
Yeah, that my question to ransom is, did they find any defects in the proposed stormwater management system? That's for you, Elizabeth.
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, I, I would probably promote Tom Henigan to speak more specifically to the stormwater system as a whole.
I think, no, I, I don't want him to talk about the storm, storm was system as a whole. I want to know if in fact he found any defects in the proposed stormwater management system as designed.
Is Tom Henigan promoted?
Uh, yeah, he is.
Tom? Henigan?
Yep.
Did you hear the question?
Yeah, I did. I did. Um, yeah, I mean, as far as the calculations, so then you know, the stormwater report that the applicant prepared. Um, and we read the peer review comments as well. You know, as far as meeting the requirements of the state, you know, we didn't have any comments with regard to that.
Thank you.
I, I didn't have a question about stormwater, but just, I think reiterating a concern that got brought up previously about water handling on site during the course of construction. And it shouldn't be underestimated the amount of dewatering that's going to be have to, uh, be managed by the general contractor while on site and it's not typically very well captured under the stormwater prevention plan, but you are going to be significantly excavating the site and it's going to be well below water table. So that water has to go somewhere. And a dewatering plan, uh, so this kind of goes back more into construction logistics and kind of the sequence of operations as it pertains to the excavation process, but it's not an insignificant amount of water that's going to be having to be managed during that, during the construction effort. So.
And I think, Mr. Norton, I think we actually addressed that, Brent, because you have a construction management and a SWIP already. I think we did, but we didn't, we're not prepared to present that tonight, but we are, we understand about the dewatering and do have some, we had to address that as well with the, um, wetlands. So we're ready and prepared to address it.
Great, thanks.
Uh huh, of course.
Will we be getting, uh, you know, I, I don't want to jump the gun. Are we going to be getting then to the discussion on this sort of construction management? Plan because that would be a natural time to take up the, uh, dewatering.
Right. I don't think we're going to get to it. I don't know that.
And it wasn't, it wasn't a question that was asked.
They were like construction related questions, Ms. Ransom, but not, not, you know, going into the depths of it. I think it's more important to get through the hydro stuff.
Yeah, let's keep, let's keep, let's hold that for a future meeting and move on.
So this, we've already answered a lot of these questions in, in the prior discussion, um, when Ms. Ransom, Mr. Frappam, Mr. Emery discussed the long-term comprehensive, I think this is a tough word, hydro geological study. Um, this is in a nutshell, I, I tried to grab questions because I think every single solitary board member had a question. Do you need one? Do you need one? Do you need one? This is the long-term hydrological study. So I think.
Yeah, you know, I, I think this is.
Makes sense to not wait till the end. I think maybe if we let Mr. Frapp present, then Mr., however you want to do it, but let Ms. Ransom kind of partake in this because.
Jill, let me interrupt for a second. So the person that asked this question, have they gotten the information they need from previous presentations to answer these specific questions?
Looks awfully redundant to me.
I, I think it is, I, I think it is, but I don't want to cut off anybody's specific questions, given the concern about editing omissions and changing of meanings here.
I actually don't know if these were my questions or not. They don't bear that much resemblance to my questions, but I did have some questions about these hydro geological studies that were omitted. And so the first question I had is because I know that the hydro geologic study was mentioned, I think maybe even at a pre-application conference. So my first question was, what is the cost in realistic duration of a meaningful and practical hydro, hydro geological study to ascertain the actual versus theoretical hydro geology of the site and potential impacts to future source of drinking water for the town. And a subsidiary question, which I will just go ahead and ask, is if the cost of that study is de minimis when compared to the overall cost of blasting and construction, would, would it not be better to go beyond this quote desktop analysis and do field work now rather than discover uh, problems that would entail mitigation measures uh, at an unknown, uh, and potentially significant cost in the future?
That's a great question. So Mr. Frappa, so you heard Ms. Marnie, Ms. Crouch, she basically is saying, look, if it's, if there's a de minimis cost, should it be done? You know, and what is the cost, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I, I leave that to you and then I do have a legal follow-up, but if you would answer her question more directly. I put up this screen because I think it's really more of the basis for that, Ms. Crouch.
Just, I really have a hard time understanding the rationale that would support the need for a hydro geologic study. When when we haven't heard what the true risks are other than a, a, a potential concern for a utrification of Beck Pond. And, and I want to come, go to that first because, um, there's, I don't want anyone to think that what that graphic showed at the end suggests that 38,000 gallons per day of water discharges to Beck Pond from the site. That's, that's, that, that statement was false. Whoever made that statement, I always want that to be known. Okay. What, what we're, what we showed is that a 7,500 gallon per day uh, septic discharge with an assumed nitrate concentration of 10 parts per million. Okay. That's at the groundwater standard. Massachusetts requires these systems to meet all groundwater quality standards. So this is a worst, worst case condition. That the increase in, in nitrate concentration in the aquifer adjacent to the site uh, would, the, the nitrate concentration would raise by, uh, point oh, one PPM. So it's, it's, it's unmeasured, unmeasurable and, and because of that, there, there's no risk. I, I mean, anyone, any geologist can do the math. It, it's a loading calculation, very simple. We, we do these all the time. It's a, it's a simple, straightforward loading calculation. And if, if someone can make the argument that we're going to be seeing much higher concentrations of nitrate that could pose a risk not only to the aquifer and then to Beck Pond, I'm all for hydro geologic study, but I haven't heard anyone disagree that the, that we're going to be increasing the concentration of nitrate or any other constituent in the aquifer from this work. So I, I can't answer the question about a hydro geologic study because I don't see the need for, for that.
Is it fair to say then that it's irrelevant how much it costs? The point is, it's not necessary? I mean, I, I think that's what it boils down to. Because Ms. Crouch is, her point is well taken. If there's any, if there's a need, what's the cost? And then you do a balancing analysis. We do that all the time. But if the point is there's absolutely no verifiable need other than somebody asking for it, then the cost, whether it be a million dollars or $10,000 is irrelevant because it's unnecessary. I mean, I, I, I think that's important to hear. And then I think it's important to hear from GZA. And then I think Ms. Crouch, you probably, uh, you keep relying on ransom, although I think probably you should be relying GZA, but ransom should weigh in because they're the ones telling you, you should get this report. So I don't know in what order you would like to hear, but I think you probably do need to hear from those three, those two other, um, experts.
Well, I would just add that Dave Thompson, whose reputation I think is, is well known to everyone, um, also recommended a hydro geologic study and he's unaffiliated with, I think he's unaffiliated with Save Tobacco Trails. So I, I.
And I don't disagree with that. I even wrote it in my letter, but my point was he has none of the available information. He's, 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 he's a wonderful man by the, by what he's written. He seems exceptionally bright and he's very well versed. But I even invited him to partake tonight because I don't think he has all of the information to make a final decision that this board can all rely upon. I mean, the board in relying upon any information it gets tonight must be verified. It must be demonstrable to be credible and it must demonstrate a need. And that's why I'm saying, Rick just said there is no need. Maybe Ms. Ransom can say, I don't know what she's going to say for a need. And then I think we need to hear from GZA whether there's a need because again, that's what's critically important for Ms. Crouch to hear, as well as the other board members who are asking the question. Because when something like this is raised, it's important for the board to allay their concerns and to really address the issues of the public. So I don't know, um,
Jill, Jill, in the interest of being efficient here, I think we had a very long and detailed discussion about the flow of, of water from aquifers toward the various ponds. Um, so I think we would be duplicating the answers to these questions.
It is, if, if your board members are satisfied and they, they've heard from our experts' information demonstrated by credible evidence tonight, I'm fine with going on. It's up to you.
Two sentence response to the original questions relative to cost, if that's helpful.
Go ahead.
Um, it's my interpretation that the type of hydro geologic study we outlined in our previous discussion on the topic about why we felt there was a need for more, that something like that could be done for roughly a hundred and $50,000, which is a small portion of the overall cost of the development and could have been completed in roughly seven months' time.
And is there any, based on what Mr. Frappa said, about there not being a need because the contribution is so minimal, what's your response? You have to say why there's a need.
I believe the fact that we're still discussing this and the board still has questions seven months into this process reflects to the fact.
Regardless of the seven months that have gone by, what is the time implication looking forward? Seven months is done. We're not talking about it.
I think you could gather meaningful data out of a study that involves both the, the um, high water condition and the low water condition.
Yep.
Or roughly a hundred and $50,000. And that was what.
Over what period of time?
I think you, you, you're going to need roughly seven months to get the, uh, the amount of, you know, high water and low water condition.
That's looking forward from this point forward, if we started tomorrow. Okay.
That's correct.
But I still want to say that our team has demonstrated and there's been absolutely no counter to the point that there's no environmental risks and that there is absolutely no potential for having the damage that would be, uh, there's no benefits to the study that are going to alleviate or change any pattern or alter anything. Nothing. That's what I said. Move on.
One, yes, if, would it be all right if I, if I, uh, so I, I just wanted to, and I may have, I may have overlooked this, but Mr. Frappa, you, you mentioned a loading calculation um, for, uh, nitrate nitrogen from the septic. And I wasn't sure if that was something that was included in your submission documents or, or not. Um, but I, I think, and, and I'm, I'm also not aware of if there's a denitrification system proposed for the septic system, but in my experience, typically a septic system doesn't discharge at 10 milligrams per liter. It's typically something more like 40 or 50 milligrams per liter of nitrate. And that is that attenuated downgrade. Uh, and typically you would show that you're not exceeding the groundwater quality standard of 10 milligrams per liter at a significant boundary. So that would be, uh, a sensitive receptor, a property boundary, something downgrade. Um, and so I, I don't know if, if I just haven't seen that information and it's available uh, or if that has, has not been completed, but I wanted to just ask that question.
So, so you're, you're correct in that natural attenuation does occur. And as a conservative assumption, I assume that the 10 milligrams per liter were at the boundary of, was occurring at the boundary of the aquifer. So it, at that point, it's already migrated from the septic system through the leach field and then continued through the overburden. Uh, whatever distance that, that happens to be, uh, maybe 50, 60 feet from there, I would guess. And then entered the, uh, uh, medium yield aquifer at the concentration of 10 milligrams per liter. So I think that's a pretty conservative estimate. So even if I'm off by an order of magnitude, which put it at a hundred, we're, we're still less than a one PPM increase in total concentration in nitrate to that medium yield aquifer. So that's why this is such a trivial discussion. I, I just can't understand it.
I have, I have something else that, that might help. Um, the presumption, so the system that was designed and approved, it was designed in accordance with Title V. We didn't ask for any waivers, any relief. Um, it's less than 10,000 gallons per day. It's 7,500 gallons per day. So, um, it's fully Title V compliant and the presumption concerning Title V compliant systems and the Wetlands Protection Act regulations is that it protects the eight interests in the Wetlands Protection Act. Uh, one of which is protection of public and private water supply and another is protection of groundwater supply. So I think that speaks volumes. And that's right from the Wetlands Protection Act regulations.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to get into the septic system design because we're really getting off topic here. That's not part of our purview. So if, uh, people don't object, I'd like to move on.
So I just put up this screen, Mr. Mitchell, because somebody had asked these questions to Mr. Emery, but if the board member who, who had these questions is already had it answered, we can keep going.
Uh, I mean, this, this is a repetition of the same.
It is. I just, I don't want somebody to say.
No, 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 I get it. I, I, I get it. If, uh, if the person that asked these questions has a concern or they want clarification or they.
Well, there's one question here. Uh, whose jurisdiction will it be to direct and monitor the remediation? In the event there is some.
Is it, what, what happened? What is the remediation for what?
Yeah, who's going to monitor the, uh, whether or not there is any contamination going on in the sea, uh, on the, um, in the wells, for example. And who directs it? Who takes over the process once there is determined to be a pollution on the site?
So I think, Mr., Mr. Emery, you probably want to answer that because he's your, I mean, we can tell you, but I think you want to hear from your expert. Mr. Emery, do you want to answer that from Mr. Dahlquist?
Uh, he's muted. He's muted.
Jamie, we can't hear you.
Jamie.
Sorry, I'm very sorry. Yeah. Um, that's a very good question and, uh, and I wanted to just give you examples from, from other communities that have dealt with large blasting projects and/or large construction projects that were in their community that, that, that would have some conditions assessed to the applicant. that, that, that would have some conditions assessed to the applicant. The town would be responsible to hire a consultant to monitor and evaluate the um, how well the applicant has abided by the conditions that have been set forth. Are, you know, what the issues are with regard to impacts. And oftentimes that uh, is paid by the applicant uh, or some other individual through a um, through an escrow account. So I will tell you for the ones that I've been involved with, it's been paid through as an escrow, but the town selects their consultant to do that. And I think what, so, so that's, that's an important component. And I think that's, that's something that will have to be established upfront. Uh, as you guys, if you move forward with approval, I would highly recommend that you put a process together for that. Um, because you can't be your own policeman. Um, and I, I think that's, that's an important component to this. We have, um, we have served in that capacity because we service mostly municipalities. Uh, on, in a lot of cases, we know what we're, you know, we know you got to get someone who knows what they're looking for. And I want to put this, this thought, and I want to leave the playing board with this, this notion. The town has put the clamps on this applicant in a lot of ways, more so than in projects that are much larger than this in terms of what they have agreed to, to do. And I am of the strong opinion that you can study things to death, but you really need to be focused. And I think why you hired me is to say, what are the things on this process that we need to make sure do not happen? And how do we pretend, prevent things from occurring? And so my focus has been to protect the town, to make sure that the clamps are on the applicant, to make sure that there isn't a contamination issue that could possibly be taken off site that would adversely impair groundwater. Because I'm a groundwater scientist. I depend upon those groundwater supplies to develop for municipalities and, and other communities. So uh, I just want you, you know, in my view, having looked at this, uh, a larger hydrogeologic, hydrogeologic study would not warrant, be warranted, would not generate value to the process because we're going to be back at the same point uh, of having to do these things. And more importantly, we need to do the things that are onsite and offsite as part of this process. So, um, so I, I encourage the town to think about how they're going to go through a, you know, this remediation. But it is up to the town and I believe it's up to the applicant to pay for that remediation and monitoring.
Jamie, the monitoring, can you give me a, a, an indication of the uh, scope of that monitoring? And I don't mean actual testing and what's going on, but the scope of what are they actually monitoring?
This. So, good question. Uh, they're going to be monitored. So one of the things that's going to be monitored is going, is going to be the muck pile. And you know, how, when can they blast? And one of the things the town has put in here is we've put a restriction in there that they can't blast during rainfall events. And we've come to an agreement of what weather station to be used to monitor, what the, how much can be done? What's the amount of rain that would shut down the facility? So those things are something the town needs to monitor. That's one thing. Second thing would be the data that's collected on the, on the well sites. There's going to be, the wells are going to be drilled. They got to be drilled to specification. There's going to have to be a submittal of data on the wells that are drilled. There's going to have to be a submittal of data. How do they process uh, permission access to, you know, residential wells? There's going to be a monitoring piece to look at that data to make sure the data that they've committed to collecting is actually being collected. Water levels every 30 minutes, nitrate, uh, all the water chemical analysis are being performed every two weeks. Not every three weeks, not every four weeks, every two weeks. That those sample collection is done upfront. So we, that, that, that can be reviewed by your consultant. All the water quality that's been, that will have to be collected prior to any construction, prior to any, any, uh, blasting. And I think there has to be, you know, a situation where they're going to be collecting data and recording it on their data sheets. Those data sheets need to be reviewed on a regular basis. So what is the nitrate in the muck pile every day? That's something that's going to be transferred. Is the piece of equipment that's being used to monitor the nitrate, has it been calibrated? Is it the right piece of equipment? Is it operating properly? Is it being cross-checked with the laboratory periodically to make sure that the nitrate is what it's supposed to be? Those are all the things that need to be addressed so that we don't have a situation where, you know, you, you now have a concern. So there, I could list a few more and I don't want to.
No, no, I.
But that's kind of a listing, a quick listing of things that, that you would be doing.
Right.
And we have the opportunity to shut down the operation. Because if things don't go the way it's expected, there's going to be provisions in there to stop the blasting, to modify the blasting, and that's very important.
Okay, and that's by an independent consultant?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Mitchell, to move on, it's a public comment period, but I don't know.
Sure. Any board comments, questions? Additions, deletions? Nothing from Elizabeth, so we'll move on.
Well, I have one question, actually, if you don't, if you don't mind. And this is, um, I, I think it's somewhat on topic. It has to do with what Jamie was just speaking about. Um, and I may have missed this detail in reviewing the blast plan. And if so, hopefully it's a quick answer. Um, you spoke about the monitoring of the, um, you know, the, the muck pile and, and the need to get the material off site quickly. Um, but it's my understanding that a lot of the material is going to be reused onsite, um, in a roughly 50%. Could you speak a little bit to what the, um, the, the blast plan has in place to prevent any issues from the material that's being reused? Rather than the stuff that's coming off site?
Yeah, so we, that's a change, um, Elizabeth, that we, uh, you know, that I put in there is that for anything that's staying onsite, there's going to have to be an impervious uh, liner below the muck pile. That muck pile is going to have to drain to a settling basin. That settling basin is going to be sampled for nitrate every day. If the sampling, and there's going to be criteria, which we use for the premium outlet malls project up in New Hampshire, which is a project that's far larger than this, that's in the actual recharge area of municipal water supply. If the, if the quality of the muck pile settling basin gets to five, which is half the drinking water standard, then there's going to be notification. Um, if it gets to um, 7.5, then there's a, there's a corrective action. And if it gets to 10, there's going to be a shutdown. So um, it's, it's a, it's a very, it's a very punitive process. Uh, but it is a process that keeps everything under control and it keeps it on a daily basis. And then there, as a backup to that, we're going to, you're going to have monitoring on those eight wells. And there's going to be sampling, collecting every two, two weeks in those monitoring wells. And then there's going to be sampling collected every two weeks in the observation. So the, so the, uh, for the period that's, uh, if the, if it doesn't get into the muck pile or some period where it doesn't get shifted over, they're going to have to cover it with an impervious uh, liner. So there's a lot of, uh, of changes to that blasting plan that I requested and that has been accepted at a great cost. I mean, this is a significant cost to the applicant. But it, it keeps stuff onsite.
So all the material then, that's both, both the material that gets taken away in trucks and the material that gets uh, broken up and reused as fill that, you know, stays around permanently. All of that goes through this process?
Whatever gets, whatever isn't taken off the site and has to go into the storage muck pile will be going through that process unless it's taken off the site immediately. And if it's not taken off the site immediately, then it has to be covered within a 72 hour period. So there's going to be a, a number of checks and balances. But for everything that stays onsite, uh, and my, my feeling is that, you know, I, I don't know what, what that amount is, 50%. We did that to try to reduce trucks entering and leaving the site because uh, that was a concern that was stated in the first public hearing that I was at. And how, how do you do that? Well, you can do that by going through with this design and they actually built it and graded it so that all, that it can work. And then the, when the settling pond gets to a certain level, it has to have, uh, you know, less than, um, I think it's at five milligrams per liter that it has to be. And then it can be transferred to another um, storage pond, you know, another storage pond somewhere off the site. So it's going to be contained at well below the drinking water standard.
That answer your question?
I, I think I'm still a little bit confused, uh, you know, because I'm, I'm thinking about some of the material that, um, I believe Granite was speaking to you earlier, you know, uh, going for stabilization on um, various hill slopes. And, and that would be material.
Yes, the muck pile can't be used. Yeah, the muck pile is not going to be used until it, it, it is law, if, if the, if there's nitrate being generated through the muck pile, then it can't be used. If it's not being generated, then the muck pile could be used.
Okay, so let's move on to the next question.
So this was the blasting schedule, excuse me, in construction management. There were just a number of questions relative to that in the blasting schedule. So Greg Hockmuth was asked, because the first question, will the professional wetland scientists be required by the COMCOM onsite daily during rock removal? Greg, just, just explain when you're going to be onsite and what your real purpose is.
Yeah, so it, I mean, we're going to try to be the monitor, uh, but it's, it's not really up to us. It's up to the commission. They have to accept us as the monitor. Um, they make the ultimate decision. Uh, but with respect to the question, uh, the monitor that's uh, hired to monitor the uh, order of conditions and the environmental aspects of the project that are within the conservation commission's jurisdiction will just be monitoring those activities. That monitor required by the order of conditions will not be monitoring um, any of the up gradient aspects of the project that's outside the commission's jurisdiction. However, there will be a NFTs permit filed and that NFTs permit will require monitoring at a certain frequency under the construction general permit. Um, and if there are activities that happen to impact uh, anything within the conservation commission's jurisdiction, the conservation commission can take action, issue an enforcement order and require corrective measures and potentially a filing to correct those activities.
And, and then the rest of these questions too, Mr. Mr. Mitchell, really relate to construction management. Um, there's some inconsistencies, like 97,000 cubic yards, that is accurate. It's actually reduced somewhat because we're going to, um, you, you know, try and use more onsite. But it's also not 808 cubic yards. It's closer to, you know, 1,300, 1,200 cubic yards a day. Um, but that's all going to be part of the construction management. And I hate to burden the board with this tonight. If you want to answer these questions, we most certainly can do it. We're prepared to. I just, I defer to the, the person who asked the question. If you want it answered now or you want to keep going and go through the stormwater and the actual phasing, excuse me. Because this really is construction management and I don't know if the board had the chance to review that plan yet.
Um, I think it would be fair if you could delay that for construction management as long as those questions are answered.
Oh, oh, absolutely. They're, they're in the report and I mean, as long as the board member is fine with that, I didn't want to leave the questions out.
Well, since I'm the one that asked the question, I'm, I'm happy with, to delay to the construction management.
Perfect, okay. So then, um, that's the, that's that. So now I go into stormwater management, if I may. Um, so here again, we're going to ask Brent Cole and Rick Frappa. So there are these givens, so there are assumptions that have been made. And I don't, I think one of them wasn't right, which is why I wrote the wording correct. But I wanted to keep the assumption because I wanted Brent to be able to explain why it wasn't correct. So Brent, can you just address this and then answer those three questions? And if you wouldn't mind, just go through the givens because it's important for each of the board members to understand what assumptions are good and accurate and, you know, why they're important.
Sure. Um, so the, the given was if in the proposed developed area, all of the tree canopy, stuff, native soils will be removed from the developed area and replaced primarily with structural fill topped dressed with lones. Significant blasting will modify localized drainage passages under the soil and over the bedrock. Many of the proposed landscape, landscape surfaces grades are two to one slopes. And the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards, specifically the structural BNP, primarily controlled the management of runoff from impervious surfaces. Then it lists the questions. There are, there are a couple inaccuracies in the given, um, that we just, we should correct. Um, a lot of the slopes aren't two to one. Actually, it's, it's less than 30% of the lawns are two to one slopes. And the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards don't only focus on impervious surfaces. Um, they do have standards in place to treat impervious surfaces, but we have to look at the entire watershed and, and the comprehensive hydrology that focuses on the pre-development versus the post-development. And what I mean by that is the, the lawns do play a role. So the hydrology change from woods to lawns um, do play a role in the hydrology model and the stormwater standards talk about that. And it comes into play when mitigating uh, flows. So the, the first question that was posed was if there was any damage to waterfall, we would pay remediation. And you know, this, this is back to the kind of questions that have been asked in this remediation and the cost. And, and obviously, you know, we don't expect any remediation efforts to be needed because we are meeting the policy and, and we've spoken a lot about the policy today. But it's in place to prevent any remediation to be needed. Um, if it's constructed correctly, if it's maintained correctly, um, then there, there will be no effects on ground, on water quality. And that's why Mass DEP has implemented their policy and that's why we've met it today. Um, so the, the cost that, you know, that's born with all this remediation stuff, it, it's, it's really just not necessary. Um, Jill, you can expand upon that or I can handle.
So, so I'm going just a little bit. So, so, but what's really important, right, is, is I think maybe the question maybe is, is compounded. So how do you ensure that the stormwater management system is working right? That's, you know, and maybe that's the play. And how you ensure that is because at, at different points in time, we have an operations maintenance plan. We have a construction management plan that will have certain performance requirements. And what, how do we guarantee that? It's not really even the condominium association at this stage, it's the developer. So if you've read your decisions, and I think you might have, from the prior um, uh, projects that have been permitted, we have to bond. So we have to either pledge collateral, pledge units, do something to show that the town, show the town that we gave you security to ensure that those systems are completed. Your own stormwater management policies provide that. So DPP really doesn't, but yours do. Yours say, okay, we're going to have a monitor. You're going to have to do an ASBIL. You're going to have to show me the system is built as designed and you have to show me it works. And once you do that, fine, then whatever security you've pledged will release. That's what you say in your regulations. So we're going to monitor that. So it's not really remediation, it's, it's assurance of proper construction. And that's our burden is the developer. So now fast forward with regard to an operating system. Listen, everything breaks, right? Nothing's been designed. And if anybody owns an appliance, we all know things don't last forever. That's why you have O and M plans with regard to stormwater management facilities. So we go in, we have to do mandatory testing, we have mandatory reporting. So maybe the remediation is, is what happens if one of these systems stops working? What happens if something fails? How do you keep it clean? What do you do? Do you have to clean out the outtakes, et cetera? And I may not be saying the right words, but we have in place, again, an O and M plan. That O and M plan gets attached to the condominium regulations as it has been with Cantor Brook and with any other project you've had with a big um, private stormwater system. Because the town has its own stormwater systems all over. Because if this were a subdivision and it was a public way, you'd, you'd own that. But we own it, we're responsible and we will make sure that those systems run properly. How does that get covered? Well, if you ever been on the board of a condominium association, there's a budgetary line and you're required to have a certain budget. And because this is a 50 unit condominium, the chapter 183 provides even more um, detail, more requirements relative to fiduciary obligation to ensure your budgets are correct. And you, and in a condominium, you actually have a 10% reserve to cover any unexpected. And you have the legal authority to assess. And you have a legal authority to assess beyond what a normal homeowner would have because it creates a lien similar to what would happen if you didn't pay your taxes. The condominium association can seize your unit. So there are unbelievable um, protections in place to ensure the O and M is properly administered, that if there's a defect, it's actually cured. And if the system isn't constructed in accordance with the plans that are approved and that actually comply with the regulations, local and state, that they have to be, or you'll seize the bond or not allow the developer to continue selling units. That's what the control is. So I, I hope I answered that question for you. Now, um, Now, um, with and if I didn't, please ask away. If I did, then we would go to question three. Okay, question three. How many monitoring, Brent, how many monitoring wells are are required and what location? For how long are they needed to properly wa- monitor water quality? Oh, I guess this goes back to the whole thing with um the monitoring wells, Brent, that Rick did. So maybe this is Rick's question.
I think we've addressed. Yeah, so. Um, yeah, so we have the eight monitoring wells onsite. Um, and we will be monitoring those, you know, on a bi-weekly basis throughout the construction project. And uh in accordance with our plan, they'll they'll be in place uh for up to a year's time. And after one year, I believe that's when we would sample for the last time all of the uh off-site wells and onsite wells uh as a confirmatory measure to uh establish what the uh the post-construction groundwater quality looks like.
Can I just make one comment? It's not just one year after. It's it's one year following the completion of construction, correct?
That's correct. Oh, I'm sorry. If I didn't, if I didn't say that, that's what I meant. And uh, yeah, so and and in between that time, though, we'll we'll have data uh that will allow us to assess trends. So, you know, before this one year is up, um, we'll 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 understand the direction of of uh groundwater quality, whether it looks like it's improving or the alternative, which which we can't expect that to happen is based on the mod- onsite monitoring that we're doing and all the engineering controls and actions that we would be taking to uh uh mitigate any uh uh releases of nitrate.
I'm sorry, I lost my place, which is never a good thing, right? Okay, twenty-two. So this is, Mr. Wheaton, I know you had a comment about stormwater, so I'm hoping we're addressing it, but if it we aren't, I'm not ignoring you. I know you have a question. Um, this was again from the list, you know, Brent, this is you. We answered this already because we kind of overlapped. What's the excess capacity, reserve capacity, calculations? Phosphorus migrating is probably the one that still maybe you want to hear. I think I answered the legal requirements. But is it fair? Does the board agree that the question to be answered is really um concerned about phosphorus migration? I think Mr. Frapp had already answered that. And so did Mr. Hockmoth, but maybe not.
I I can weigh in.
Okay, please, Brent.
Yeah, just to reiterate the excess capacity, um, the the stormwater ponds have about a ten percent excess capacity for the hundred-year storm. That equates to ten thousand cubic feet of water that it could um essentially hold more of. Um, so that al- that allows for additional freeboard in all those storm events. Um, as for the phosphorus, um, so the the question is, the concern has been expressed about phosphorus migrating from property and not being captured and retained by the stormwater management system. Can you comment on what these sources might be if the current landscape plan calls for use of organic fertilizers that do not contain phosphorus? Will the stormwater system remove phosphorus and how much? So if you recall, I did speak upon phosphorus removal in the stormwater systems last time. Um, and the rain gardens do a great job. Um, they remove thirty to ninety percent of phosphorus and the infiltration ponds remove sixty to seventy percent of phosphorus. The stormwater design and and the overall design of the property does take in a lot of the lawns. So we are obviously calling for organic fertilizers, but a lot of the phosphorus that lands on the lawns is actually caused by natural occurrences, and that is your leaves, your seeds, your pollen, um, and and things that are are typical leaf litter. Fortunately for this project, you'll have a management team that will clean up lawn clippings and clean up fall leaves and things of that nature that will help reduce the phosphorus and keep from phosphorus load into the stormwater ponds. But I think that right there is a um a good way of of removing phosphorus. As for the legal binding requirements, uh, Jill kind of stole my thunder on that one.
Sorry.
Has based on pretty much everything that goes through the construction inspection process and then the post-construction process, which is really that operation and maintenance. Your uh your stormwater regulations actually speak upon this um very well. They're actually fairly robust. Um, and it talks about um performance guarantees that need to be put in place, construction as-built, uh stamped by a professional engineer to ensure the stormwater management systems were designed um or constructed in accordance with the design. Um, and then all of that leads into the operation maintenance manual um that will be maintained and inspected on an ongoing basis from the homeowners homeowners association.
And then, did you, Greg, did you, Ms. Hot, Ms. Crouch had asked a question about fertilizers last time. Did you want to speak to that again?
Well, it's it sounds like the landscape plan already calls for the use of organic fertilizers that don't contain phosphorus. So that's you can't get much better than that. I mean, the only thing I would add is that they also stipulated that it be slow release used to be consistent with the Conservation Commission's order of conditions.
Yeah, we intended.
Most of those organic fertilizers are slow release.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if anybody has any more questions relative to to stormwater, Mr. Mitchell, but that was it. And now it's at the end. For public comment.
Any questions from the board?
I would like to make a a question uh probably to Brent and to Peter Eliasen. I think it's important for us to understand overlap areas between what this board's permit would be and what the uh Conservation Commission's uh requirements as per their permit has imposed on the project. Uh, can you give us some examples of that? Just to give the board some comfort level in understanding that uh there are a lot of people expecting a lot of monitoring, a lot of eyes on and a lot of enforcement on uh the project over time. Does that make sense?
It it does. And and, you know, honestly, Greg has handled most of the Conservation Commission stuff and and I've handled most of the planning stuff. Uh, it it may actually make sense for Greg and I to put um some sort of letter together of all the monitoring that will occur during construction and present that during the construction management uh hearing that will will likely have subsequent to this hearing. Does that work for you?
Uh, I would accept that.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Any uh comment, Elizabeth?
I guess I would defer to Tom Henigan on stormwater. I think most of our questions related to stormwater are probably something that we would talk more to during the construction cycle versus the uh stormwater management plan as designed. Obviously, we've noted previously, uh, you know, I think earlier in the discussion, somebody noted the fact that obviously maintenance is important, you know, making sure that um this the this rain gut gardens are maintained uh and so forth. They only they only work as designed if they're maintained. And so I think, you know, the the board will want to make sure there's provisions uh to in enforce the maintenance.
Yep, I I think you're absolutely right. Okay, move on.
So then the next, pardon me, the next question was relative to phasing because very everybody wants to know when is this all going to happen? So we um we, Brent, put together a phasing plan and it is definitely a two-phase project. And it was easier for Brent to actually try and outline what the phases are than try to answer some of these questions. We're there's a next, the next um slide has a lot of questions that we do answer. But this one, Brent, can you just run through, just to describe phase one, phase two, and then let's go to the 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 questions on the second sheet.
So the development is a is a two-phase uh project. Phase one is the entrance road. Um, it's the entire loop road. I'm sorry, I take that back. Phase one is the the entrance road. Um, it's also a temporary cul-de-sac septic system. Majority of the stormwater basins, uh twenty-four units, and then the temporary cul-de-sac, like I said. Uh, phase two doesn't begin until phase one is fifty percent sold. Um, the questions that were asked were, will there be a fully functioning drainage system across phase one? Uh, yes, the the drainage system is is one of the first things that gets implemented, especially the stormwater ponds, to try to get those stabilized uh before discharging stormwater to them. And then will phase two, will phase two be complete? Or will the phase two will complete the drainage system for the entire development area? Uh, phase two, after the construction of phase two, it will complete all of the the drainage systems. The applicant asked that it will take between two and three years to complete and to sell all the units for phase one and then additional two to three years to complete and sell all the units for phase two.
And then here's the big, here, here are a lot of the direct questions, and then I think the board may want additionally asked questions, but this is the big one, I think.
So so how much of phase two construction will be started during phase one? The uh the plans that you guys have show a phase line for buildout of units. That is not a construction phase. The construction plan that were submitted to you actually show the the overall construction phasing. And you'll notice that the blasting and and you can see it's similar on this plan, a dark purple hatch line, but the blasting and the limits of construction really extends to the overall loop road. And that is done strategically to make sure there's no blasting that occurs behind the unit that are in in the actual loop road. Um, there's also, if you go to the next screen, Jill.
This, you mean?
So there's also some overlap into phase two for um for the construction staging, and that's what I'll I'll kind of get into now. Um, how much of phase two construction will be started within phase one but remain to be completed? The answer to this is is fairly difficult, um, especially since I'm not the actual contractor, but I would say it would fall in between zero to twenty-five percent of phase two will be disturbed um because of phase one. And and there will be clearing, cutting, grubbing and removal of organic matter in the phase two site. Because like I said, they will have to blast in that loop road and in order to blast, they got to clear and grub.
Right, so right in here, this is basically all clearing and grubbing, right? This whole purple and green, everything.
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, during the phase one.
Okay.
And then blasting, scraping of ledge, disposal, storing of rock, debris, digging for underground utilities. Um, there'll be some of this stuff in phase two. Like I said, that there will be blasting. So there will be components of that question that will occur during uh phase one in the phase two limits. Now, the the next two, the completing of the roughing for the utilities and the shaping of the earth, those won't be occurring. Um, what will occur over the phase two line will be the blasting, um, will be the stumping, the grubbing, that type of stuff. And then there'll be a a storage and stockpile area. As units are being built in phase one, they'll need to move material into phase two as they prepare for that phase and sell units phase one.
So basically, when we just go back just to show them this plan, um, I'm going to make this plan really big so they can see it. I just want to make, because they're trying to assess what the impact is going to be, you know, to the entire project before you you're really building. So you can see, so go ahead, Brent, just describe to them what the impacts will be at each point in phase. This is all phase one. So just describe what will happen and where it stops.
If you had a chance to look through the construction management plan, this is the first plan. This is the mobilization. So this is the temporary access road to get into the site. Um, that is shown in in kind of blue near Tobacco Road. And then you have a green area, which is the storage and stockpile area. And then you have this purple area that they'll be used for, that they'll be clearing. Um, and that really is your limit of disturbance that, you know, it's it's fairly loose, but that's what they project to clear in order to blast. Um, so that is your first mobilization component of the construction management plan.
Can you just show by or tell me where to show them where the where the shaping and recontoring will not occur, basically?
So I can I can annotate here, but you know, there's there's this line here um that you see that will likely occur in order to blast in the loop road here and prevent any, you know, disturbance to the units that are being built inside the loop road here.
Okay, all right. So that was really the um here's the, okay, here's the next phasing one. Go ahead, Brent.
Yep, and I can keep going on this. So this, the southern perimeter of phase two area drops approximately eight feet down new two-to-one slopes onto pre-existing steep slopes and hard onto either property owned by a butter or a wetland buffer zone at mid-slope. How will stormwater be captured on unfinished top without a functioning drainage system over approximately one thousand linear feet and where will stormwater be redirected to prevent erosion for an intermediate intermittent time? So we've heard your concerns about erosion and and you should notice on the revised plans that were submitted to you last Tuesday that we've done everything in our ability to to try to curb your concerns. And and the last one that we've done is we've added a sto- well, uh, stone armor to the backside of those two-to-one slopes. Um, if you're not familiar with stone armor, it's it's taking the the blasted rock um and it's it's processing it down to a a certain level and it's putting it on that stone slope so that no erosion can occur. We've also added another uh safety measure, and that is a mulch berm on the top of the slope. So that any any stormwater, which is very minimal, um, there's very minimal stormwater that goes over these slopes. It's mainly from flat lawns with no velocity. Um, but any stormwater that does go over the the slopes will go through a mulch berm, which is a approved erosion control perimeter practice, then on to the stone slope and then met at the toe of the slope by a silk sock. So really, you have three very robust erosion control measures there to prevent any erosion over those two-to-one slopes.
And then also, just so that everybody knows, during the phasing of construction, you complete all but one's one rain garden for phase one. So you basically have a completely, you had said it before, but you have a completely operating stormwater system in place for all the disruption. Right?
Yeah.
Can I, can I add, can I add something? I, this was the question that I posed, so uh this might be a good time to uh.
Good, okay.
Okay. Uh, what I was after was, what is the state at the top of the hill during that interim between phase one and phase two? And I was concerned about uh blasting, certainly, but the first thing would be clearcutting. Now, if you are going to blast in the cul-de-sac road, then apparently you're going to have to clearcut that. You're going to blast some for the underground drainage system. I think that's what Brent said. So some of the underground drainage will be blasted to lay the pipe before anybody occupies any of the houses, I assume. Or is there going to be, is there going to be blasting after you get fifty percent occupation?
So he didn't mean this cul-de-sac either, Mr. Dalquest. He meant the temporary one up here.
Okay.
Just, I apologize. Did I did, I just want to make sure. So there's nothing going on down here. Go ahead, Brent.
So you're going to blast for, in phase two, you're going to do more blasting at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be more blasting, yep.
So and no clearcutting on the top? So you're basically going to leave leave the top as it is during phase one? No work done on that cul-de-sac road?
Correct.
Correct. Everything not shaded in purple will be will be left.
So once you have fifty percent of occupancy, then on the site, you're going to start blasting there for phase two and clearcutting, of course, first. And then going through all of that construction in phase two. Okay.
Correct.
So your natural hydrology will exist then in phase two until you begin the work in phase two.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Um. Should we go?
The next one was number two, Jill, and I uh I think actually was Greg.
Oh, because the bu- buffer. So Greg?
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit already and you know, if there's any alteration within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, they have every they have every right to take action, and typically that would be uh, dealt with with the issuance of an enforcement order to uh, correct the situation.
Okay.
And then the construction management plan, we've agreed that we'll, we are, we did submit it, and we will go through it, and um, just maybe not tonight.
No. Right.
That was loud one, Mr. Mitchell, right? No. Okay, then public comment period again, Mr. Mitchell.
Any comments from the board? Elizabeth?
I believe Tom Hannigan had a comment, and I know he had a hard time getting through before. Tom, are you able to get on?
If not, we can wait until the construction management plan.
And we can go back, yeah.
He's still a panelist, he was never.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, yeah, I just, and this, this does go, that I know we um, Jill said we wouldn't talk about the construction management, I did, I did look at that a little bit, but I think as far as stormwater goes, you know, I made the comment before that we didn't have any uh, you know, comments with this stormwater. The proposed stormwater system has, you know, the calculations as proposed, but looking at the um, the um, stormwater, and the uh, construction phasing plans, you know, one of the plans does show some temporary um, stormwater ponds and sediment basins near the entrance, but there is no um, sort of reference to any other sediment uh, bases or other um, temporary stormwater controls for, you know, segmentation, um, kind of further back on the site. And you know, my understanding from um, from the plans and where you described, you know, to blast, you're gonna need to go in and clear that whole area that you were showing, that hatched area, so um, strip off the topsoil. And so during that period, which is, you know, obviously, you know, several months long, you have, you know, potentially uncontrolled, uncontrolled runoff, so um, you know, and when you do present the stormwater, I mean, the uh, construction phasing plan and construction management plan would be good to just give a little bit more about the plan for um, you know, managing stormwater during construction and sort of the interim grading, because I think even those areas you showed at the entrance, but the um, you know, the temporary access roads that are being put in, as well as that, that sort of staging and stockpiling area, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of grading that needs to happen just to make those areas usable. Um, that don't want to line up with the, with the final grading in those areas, so you know, there, there's this kind of information that, that you have to read between the lines on currently to kind of understand what's happening and and how things will be handled, so.
And we're gonna make sure that 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 those will be highlighted so the board can see them, because we expect that those be concerns to have, you know, a good construction management plan during construction. So I mean, I apologize, stormwater management, absolutely, we agree.
Yeah, so there's also obviously a crossover between the stormwater management and the construction.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, you have that pre-construction plan, so we we definitely will. I think Brent did start to address it, and he may even completed it. Brent, I I leave that to you.
Yeah, we we've been working with the contractor to put together the the construction management plan. Um, if if there's more that you need to see to it, then we certainly can add more. Um, you know, this, this SWIP talks a lot about this stuff, and a lot of the things are controlled onsite by the contractor. Um, so a specific interim grading is not typical to a construction site. Um, I, I don't think you're gonna grade out every single uh, construction road that they, they have in there to navigate the property while they're blasting and things like that. Um, but we, we can certainly add, or try to add more if there's more concern. Um, but I, I really don't see much more needed besides what we've put on the plan. Uh, but we can get into it more at the, at the next hearing.
Okay.
Well, I'm just have one comment, and I really don't expect an answer, but it seems to me that marketing the initial twenty-four units would be a little bit difficult, because uh, people would be uh, buying into a construction site. Excuse me, it just um, I, I, I wonder how you will address that, but that's for a later day.
So I think we've already actually discussed this one too, Mr. Mitchell, it's snow removal and de-icers, but, but it was a question about, Brent, why don't you just address it?
Yeah, um, so there are notes on the plan that if, if snow um, does need to remove, be removed site, that it, that it has to be. Um, it'll, the snow will be kept up on the banks, um, it'll flow back into the roadway and then into the, into the stormwater ponds. And I think the question that's being posed here is, is there a contamination risk to stormwater system? And and again, we can, we can reiterate it, but it's, these systems are built for redundancies, they're built for the hundred-year storm. They have pre-treatment practices to help remove the sediment that is found in uh, in the snow. Um, and and the snow, the snow melt um, will not have an issue with the overall capacity of these storm, these stormwater ponds. Like I said, they're built for the hundred-year storm, they're built with a ten percent exit. Um, we see no issue with stormwater and a contamination risk um, with any of the, the snow. Um, as for the, I believe Greg can touch base, but I, I think him and the Conservation Commission worked on a uh, a de-icer material that's very environmentally friendly.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Brent. I know at the last planning board meeting, one of the members had a question about what type of de-icer we were considering, and so there's no perfect de-icer, I think everybody knows that. Um, rock salt or sodium fluoride is the cheapest, uh, but it's also the most damaging to environmental areas, tends to burn plants, and um, a lot of people use it just because it's really cheap, so we'd be willing to use calcium chloride, which is better. And it's consistent with what the Conservation Commission put in their order of conditions. Um, and that was language that no sodium-based de-icers be used within their jurisdiction. And even though this is outside of their jurisdiction, eventually, the water will get there. Uh, so I think calcium chloride would make the most sense.
Yep. Okay, I, I don't, it, it, does the person who wrote the question have a follow-up? Should, any more discussion, Mr. Mitchell?
I'm not hearing any, so let's move on.
Okay, okay. The very last thing, so the septic system, there was a question by someone relative to the septic system, and and Greg is going to handle that.
Yeah, we, we, we touched on it a little bit already, um, so to answer the, the question, um, there was comments made by Tara and Howard during the uh, planning board process. They reviewed um, the septic system that was submitted, we responded to those comments. Those comments were incorporated in the final design that was ultimately approved. Um, there was no subsequent uh, peer review after those comments were addressed. The plan was, final plan was reviewed by the town, and an approval letter was issued. How quickly the potential contaminants, contaminants moved through septic area, through the aquifer, and through the irrigation ponds, into Beck Pond, how well they would be filtered out in the process? I'm not qualified to answer that, but I'll stand behind the comment that I made before, that the septic system was designed in accordance with the state uh, environmental sanitary code. And as a result, it's presumed to protect the interests in the Wetlands Protection Act. And that includes uh, protection of public and private water supply and protection of groundwater supply, so.
I think Mr. Frappa did touch on this as well, though, so you're just reiterating and then adding more, so, good.
Were within a nitrogen-sensitive area or an area that required a special type of septic system, we would have designed that, but the fact remains that we're not.
Yeah, we covered that pretty thoroughly.
We did, and then there's that same thing with the, the type of formal um, hydrological um, blah, 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 septic effluent, both Mr. Frappa and Mr. Emery had that discussion. And then there's any support for the position that any disturbance should otherwise be considered potential groundwater threat until proven other? I don't even know what this means. I don't understand the question, is there any support for the position that any disturbance should be considered a potential groundwater threat until proven otherwise?
Well, I, I wrote that question, and that, that really comes from uh, the GPOD. It's practically the definition of the GPOD. Any activity in that area or disturbance in that area could be potential groundwater threat. So that's where that came from, the GPOD designation.
Okay, but this, so this area is, I'm gonna defer this to Rick. I mean, I think so the GPOD, Rick knows where the GPOD is, we're not in it, so it doesn't apply, but Rick, can you?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, the, the um, the delineation of the GPOD um, is is further to the north of where the septic system is, including the leach field.
Correct.
Uh, so I guess that wouldn't apply because we're, we're outside the GPOD.
Any other questions?
Any follow-up, Mr. Dalquest, or?
Uh, no follow-up.
Okay, I, believe it or not, well, does everybody want to cheer? You're done. Obviously, I apologize, I don't know if the board, I mean, I think I was very comprehensive, I think for the most part, I, I did give you all of your questions were responded, were, were presented. Um, if, in, I just tried to eliminate redundancy, but please, if I didn't, please tell us now what those questions are and let us respond to them, because we do not want to leave you with a question unanswered. The whole point of tonight is to assuage your concerns.
Okay, before we end, um, I'm gonna read some of the public uh, comments. I apologize that we didn't get to public comments, but we said at the beginning of the meeting, this was a public hearing for the board to hear from the applicant, from our peer reviewer and um, the Save Tobacco Woods Ransom Engineering Team to address the questions that were specifically put to those people as it relates to the blasting hydrology, civil engineering, stormwater management, and geohydrology that relates to the to the um, proposed project. Um, and I know Deborah Eliason goes, I object to the public being excluded from commenting on the question. This is a public hearing, and the public should have the opportunity to speak. Um, in fact, the public has the opportunity to listen here, and they have been commenting through their Save Tobacco Woods Technical Engineering. And it is the discretion of the chair as to whether the public can participate or not. Um, is this the first project Mr. Emery has been a third-party reviewer for the Town of Hamilton? Can't answer that question.
Yes.
Okay, but as you heard, he's done literally thousands of other. Did the Town of Hamilton secure Mr. Emery's services through the bid process? That would be a Patrick.
Through a what?
Did the Town of Hamilton secure Mr. Emery's services through the, our E-bid?
Uh, no, we uh, we had Mr. Emery's services secured through uh, uh, a, as a sub-consultant to TEC, who's the primary engineer, uh, peer review engineer for the town.
Anna Friedman, this is, this is a biased presentation and does not represent the best interests of the town. Why would the planning board allow questions that are directed to ransom if they do, if they are not the applicant? I don't understand. The question is on the charge, the board is simply granting a special permit to develop or appropriate for the I think not what question the board's had. I think the deliberations for the last nine months have been extensive and very inclusive of all parties, so I'm not sure how to answer that question. With the additional questions added to this presentation, the board has let the applicant control the narrative by creating questions they choose to answer. This meeting should end in a format altered to the future consideration. Board should always be on, always own the formatting of the list of the question, publish the questions ahead of time for review. The current format is all serving for the applicant. Well, in fact, the uh, board did put together the questions in a written form. They were submitted to the applicant, they were shared with um, Save Tobacco Woods. Um, and so everybody was fully informed on what the questions were, and the questions were put specifically to the applicant, their consultants, our peer reviewer, and to ransom engineering, so everybody has been fully informed as to what the questions would be. And people had the chance to ask follow-up questions relative to those questions. Why don't you let ransom talk? Well, I think uh, Elizabeth might incur that actually they had ample time to talk. Just to be clear, our well is thirty feet deep, not three hundred feet deep, and we're across it. Other ons, any of this area have shallow wells, this is self, here experts actually don't need any elements. Okay, John Cole again.
Excuse me, Rick, when you read the questions, you're, you're often, uh, they're indecipherable, I don't know whether you're, it just is very difficult to hear, so when you read.
Is this better?
Your internet's going in and out, Mr. Mitchell, that's what it is.
Yeah, I apologize. That's Verizon. Uh, somebody else can read these questions.
I can put them up on the screen, believe it or not.
Then go for it.
Okay. I don't know where you are. Anna Friedman, um, here we're up. What was the last?
John Cole.
You're on the last three.
Here we are, okay, I apologize, go ahead.
Can't see it.
So Jill, we actually can't see those.
You can't see, oh, I apologize, you know what, I can, would you like, Ms. Crowder, you wanna, I don't want a, a board member to read them, I really shouldn't. So.
We're almost done.
Somebody vol- somebody volunteer.
I don't mind, I don't mind reading these. So Corey, can you please let Mr. Frappa uh, know that my well is thirty feet deep, not three hundred, I think that's a previous uh, comment, John Cole, that's the one you left off on, Rick. A miniscule amount uh, is more than enough when the risk can be avoided in advance. This is uh, Miss, or Andy Friedman, sorry. Miniscule amount is more than enough when the risk can be avoided in advance. When I was a kid, you couldn't swim in tobacco as the lake was severely polluted. Yeah, Andy Friedman, uh, yes, Mr. Mitchell, you are adding fifty-plus homes, which will add potential harm to the offer, that's the last question. Or comment.
Okay. So, next meeting, Patrick. Can you tee it up? Patrick, are you still here?
I am still here, our next meeting is uh, April the fifth.
So I happen to know our, our contractor is not available on April the fifth. And now, I apologize, our engineer, Mr. Cole.
So we need to uh, determine what our agenda is first before we know who we need to be invited, right?
Right.
Well, I think we're, the next thing, it sounds like it's gonna be the construction management plan.
Which, which honestly, Brent Cole is, is absolutely essential.
No, I get it, no, I just, I'm talking about the agenda item, not the time. So that would be on what date, Patrick?
Uh, that's Tuesday, again, April the fifth.
No, he's not available.
Uh, our next meeting would be on uh, April the twenty-first.
That's up, okay, Brent, I, I don't know where you are, are you on the call? Can you do the twenty-first, which, that's a Thursday too, Patrick, right?
Yeah, that is a Thursday, we had to uh, jockey around our dates that week because of the holiday.
So may I ask, Mr. Mitchell, like Brent, you're available on the twenty-first, right?
Yep.
So, Mr. Mitchell, would, would the, I mean, just the construction and management plan would be a very, very short conversation? Would it be feared, fair, pardon my English, fair to go through the lighting and then landscaping and the layout of the homes, because the lighting, landscaping layout of the homes is all combined?
Let's put it on the agenda and see if we can get through it.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's it, unless a board member has anything else to um, discuss, add, Patrick, anything?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
Can I, can I just?
Can I, can I just make a clarification? On, on the well depth? When I was speaking about well depths, I was specifically talking about bedrock wells, not wells that may have been screened in the overburden. So if, if it wasn't clear, I, I apologize.
Yeah.
We do know that wells there. We have it on our plan. James Christiansen identified it. We have all the abutting wells and all the depths.
Okay, very good. So we need to close the hearing. I'm sorry, uh, sorry. Continue the hearing to April 20, what is it?
21st.
21st.
All right. Fifth, no. Didn't you just say you want to do landscape next and skip construction? So next is April 5th, the 21st is construction.
Uh, well, well, I think Jill is not going to be available the 5th unless you want to do that on the 5th.
I mean, we could, my problem is if you have any questions that Brent needs to answer because of grading, any he's not going to be there, so. I know Larry probably would want to, but.
Yeah, no, no, why don't, why don't we schedule April 5th to do lighting, landscape and other things you said.
I mean, I, I do have a conflict as well, so I would have to have a distinct start and end time. I, I can do it, but I have to have a distinct start and end time, that's all. On the 21st, it would be easy. I, I, I just, again, that's the main issue. So we'd have to start maybe like at 8:30 to 9 o'clock for me.
No, 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 no.
I can do seven to eight as well.
Why don't we try seven to eight?
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, we should be able to get through some part of that. And maybe it's the, maybe it's just the construction man, no, I'm sorry, just the lighting and
In landscaping? I see, because I would really like to give, because I think Mr. Wheaton was the one who really wanted to see the artist renderings. I'd love to be able to put them on the screen. I'd like you to be able to talk to the landscaper. I think that it, it really will be helpful. And I think it'd be helpful to go through the lighting plan.
Can you do that April 5th?
Yeah, and we can do it in an hour because we'll have a hard stop.
Okay.
And I think the board members will appreciate the hard stop.
All right. So we'll continue the special housing, the senior housing special permit public hearing till April 5th, 2022. And discuss lighting and not landscaping.
Oh, landscaping. I'll bring, I'll bring our landscaper.
Okay, lighting and landscaping.
And I'll even bring, I'll even have our architect there so you can ask questions about it if you want. If we can get through it, good. If we can't, we move on.
And for the purposes of, can we do this as a combined motion as the storm water management public hearing continued as well? Or do we, as a separate?
I mean, I would continue them both. I would just say we're continuing the storm water and the source.
Okay. I need a motion, I need a motion from a planning board member to continue the senior housing special permit public hearings and the storm management public hearings for April 5th.
Mr. Chairman, will that be at 7:00 PM by Zoom?
It will be 7:00 PM by Zoom.
Thank you, Attorney Stein.
So you guys, if you want to spend here all night, that's great. Until somebody makes a motion, we're not moving.
Repeat two parts, please.
I need a motion to continue the senior housing special permit public hearings and the storm water management's permit special permit hearings. And so I've lost my mind.
Okay, I moved that we postponed the senior housing special permit and the storm water management permit hearings until, what date did you want?
April 5th.
April 5th.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call and vote. Marty Crouch.
Marty Crouch, aye.
Richard Boroff.
Richard Boroff, aye.
Bill.
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Donovan.
Donovan Boroff, aye.
Amal.
Amal Dalquist, aye.
Corey.
Corey Bulleye, aye.
And Rick Mitchell, aye. So the meeting is concluded. Thank you, everybody, for a marathon meeting. I think it was highly productive and look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.